Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 13 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And ask you, first of all, if you have pagers or cellphones or similar devices, if you would either turn those off or silence them at this time, we would appreciate it. If you are not the applicant and you've come to discuss a case with us today, there are sheets like this, they're sitting on the table outside the chambers. If you would complete one and indicate which case you're interested in talking about, we would be happy to hear you. And with that, Russell, we'll go to approval of the minutes. No approval of minutes?
No.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes. It was July, but I don't remember the date.
It's August 9.
August 9, okay. Wasn't July. Cast your votes. And the minutes are approved. Continuance request?
We have one uncontested request for continuance. This is item 54, C 6376. Request to continue till September 27.
Did anyone come to discuss that item with us today?
Moving on to cast a continuance.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the uncontested continuance. Cast your votes. And that's approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today? If not, we'll go to the consent. We have one, Tim?
Yes, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates. We'd submitted a letter requesting a continuance of items 17 and 18.
Yeah, we haven't got, I don't have new requests yet.
I wasn't paying close attention.
Other new requests for continuance, which does include items 17 and 18. There's item, there's item 15 through 18. Item 15 is PUD 1466. Item 16, C 6366. Item 17, C 6375. Item 18, E D 201. Those are all to be continued until September 27. Item 32, S P U D 680, a request to continue until October 25. And the last four items, item 47, C 6362. 48, S P U D 683. Item 49, C E 831. And item 50, P C 10276, would all be continued until September 27.
Did anyone come here today to talk to us about any of the items that were just read? 15, 16, 17, 18, 32, 47, and 48 through 50. Now I'll take a motion?
Move on the items, the new request for continuances.
We have a motion and second to approve the continuances. Cast your votes. And that's approved. And there were no requests from the public, so we'll move on to the consent docket.
There are 10 items on the consent docket today. Item 1, C 6370. Item 2, D A 23583, which has a variance attached to it. Item 3, P C 10318. Item 4, A B C 761. Item 5, A B C 764. Item 6, C 6363. Item 7, C E 829. Item 8, C 6383. Item 9, C 6384. And item 10, P U D S P 1369 H.
We do have someone signed up to talk to us about item 3.
Item 3.
So we'll hear that in order. And a motion to approve the consent docket would have to include a motion to approve the variance to item 2.
Move variance on item 2.
We have a motion and second to approve the variance, item 2. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Move the consent docket with the exception of item 3.
We have a motion and second to approve the consent docket deleting item 3. Cast your votes. And that's approved. We'll go to item 3.
Item 3 is P C 10318, an application by Tim Fang Zhang to rezone 3016 West Wilshire Boulevard from R1 Single Family to R2 Medium Low Density Residential, comes in Ward 2.
And is Kimberly Gann here? You need to come to the microphone if you're going to address us, please. We need your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Kim Gann, and 7812 Old Hickory Lane.
Okay.
Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. I don't really know what your zoning laws mean, if they're planning on building a duplex or more than a single family dwelling, but that's a really small lot. And honestly, I just hated to see something like that go in.
Well, the application is for duplex, and it's roughly 10,000 square foot lot, is that right?
I don't know how large in square footage the lot is. Our water pressures are low. I don't know if that would make any difference, but I didn't know how large they were building. I really didn't know, you know, what was going on. I just hated to see more go in there.
Well, the application is for duplex, otherwise a single family home could be built, so...
Yeah, a single family would be much better than a double family.
Well, let's hear from the applicant then, and he can tell us what he plans to do. Mr. Zhang, if you'd give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name's Tim Fang Zhang. The case number is P C 10318.
And your intention is to build a duplex, is that...
Yes. I'm going to build like 2, like 1,300 square feet. It'll be like 2,600.
Total?
Yeah, maybe 2, 2,300. The lot, if I build a single family home, I could build like, you know, 4,000, 5,000 square feet, it's just, it's just the same.
Commissioners, any questions of Ms. Gann or the applicant?
And then there's like, north of there, there's all duplex, and left of there is all condo, and there are more dens, way more dens than duplex. And I have 10,000 square feet of, more than 10,000 square feet of the land over there.
Let me make an observation about this. Some time ago, we approved development along Northwest 16th Street, near the theater district where that, where the Dick Theater is. And, and the development was okay, but it was a strict rezoning without any kind of controls over what was built. And the two units that were built are, in my opinion, and that's my opinion totally, somewhat significantly inconsistent with the nature of the historical or the architecture in the neighborhood. They just kind of sit there. And this is a strict rezoning, which I think, you know, I'm not in disfavor of. But because this is smack in the middle of residential area, you know, it's all R1, all the houses, and I'm not familiar with the houses, but allowing just a straight duplex, you know, you could do, you could build a really cheap-looking couple of duplexes that would be really probably detrimental to the neighbors. And I think that we really ought to look at this more carefully. And, you know, I mean, do you have architectural drawings about what they're going to look like?
Yeah, I'm a builder myself, and I have another nicer house, which is like Elmhurst and Dorchester. I have a 6,000 square feet nice house, and I'm a builder myself, and I build a pretty nice house.
With brick or wood siding?
It has to be brick. Yeah, no siding, no, no siding. It's going to be brick.
You see what I mean, is that, you know, with this straight rezoning, you could just park up and down there, that really sticks out like a sore thumb in a nice neighborhood. And that's...
Well, my house would be, I mean, a lot nicer, the house next to mine. Mine, you know, right next to mine, about $40,000, $50,000 home with siding. You know, and that's a huge lot. I'd like to put a nice duplex on it. It's going to be not nicer than the house surrounding the area, you know?
I don't think we need to get into nicer, nicer and not nicer and so forth. That's not before us.
No, 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 I know.
No, it's not. It's not before us.
But if it was an S P U D, we would have controls. Even though... I think this is kind of a rhetorical question, because I was disappointed in that Northwest 16th Street development that happened. And just every time I go by, and I think, well, there should have been some more, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not...
Even though...
I'm okay with your application, actually.
Even though one side can be 15, 1600, be a lot larger than the home or surround the area, so when the home gets bigger, you put nicer stuff in there, you know?
I do have one question. The property to the south looks, appears vacant. Is that right? Is that an empty lot that's to the south?
Hmm, it's a house.
So it looks from the, looks like a big, somewhat of a larger gap there that might allow for additional development. Is that right? Am I wrong, yes?
No.
I don't think so. This, this house really fronts onto the street, and this is really their backyard.
This is their backyard?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a backyard.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I, I actually had some concerns about this property until I went out and really looked at the area. You may recall that we did the S P U D 473 some time ago, and that was kind of a, you know, negotiated process. And looking at what they're talking about doing here, a duplex, I really do not have a problem with it here. I think, given the lot itself and its location and its surroundings, it's very unlikely that someone is going to come in and infill that property with R1. I think it will almost certainly be something else. And in terms of things, R2 sounds pretty good to me, actually. I know that there are issues with water pressure in the area, and if this were something more intense, I would definitely be concerned about that. But, you know, R2 for the, for the lot, I think, is a good fit. So I would move approval.
We have a second. Thank you, okay. We have a motion and second to approve item 3. Cast your votes. And it's approved. Thank you.
Please send it. Thank you. We are on items requiring separate vote. Item 11 is S P U D 678. It's an application by Dollar General Corporation to rezone 14901 South Anderson Road from A A Agricultural to S P U D 678 in Ward 4.
Good afternoon. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Bob Gage. I'm with GBT Realty Corporation out of Nashville, Tennessee. I am here to request a rezone on a piece of property. It's a 2.4 acre lot at the northwest corner of southeast 149th Street and South Anderson Road. We are proposing to build a 9,100 square foot Dollar General at this location, and we do intend to meet all ordinances, regulations regarding parking, exterior elevations, landscaping, screening.
Okay, we do have someone signed up in protest, Melody McDaniel. If you would come to the, you can come to this podium over here.
I think we have one more, maybe, signed up to talk. Yes, my name is Melody McDaniel. I live at 12001 Southeast 149th. My home is on five acres on one of the corners adjacent to this property. I've lived in this area for 30 years. Our neighborhood fought this fight in 2004 and won. They wanted businesses on the corner and a mobile home park with 52 mobile homes on two and a half acre lots. I thought we made it clear then that we did not want business or mobile homes on that land. We had over 300, 300 signatures on a petition. It was a long drawn out fight. They kept continuing it over and over again, about seven times, without cause. Well, I think their cause was to actually wear us out, but we kept coming. Twice they continued it to address our concerns, but that was done really under false pretenses. They didn't do anything to address our concerns.
Well, that's not the same applicant, so we need to talk about this case if we could.
Okay. Well, I'm asking, please don't let them do that to us again. Do they think that if they waited long enough, some of the faces would change and they could stand a better chance of winning? What they don't get is the way of life in the country and the reason people move out there. And let me assure you, I shared copies of this new architecture plan and the landscape plan to everyone I spoke to, and they were posted at, in a public place along with a petition. And we have that petition here today. We were told we didn't actually have to turn it in until it got to city council, but we have another person who wants to address the petition. We live away out in the country, in the boonies, so to speak, but close enough to run errands. You don't have, you have to move a long way out in order to keep the towns from creeping in. We don't live out there for the convenience of it. We live out there to be away from the lights and the traffic and to enjoy the wildlife. For many of us, this is our place of retirement. Many of our homes, right there along 149th and Anderson, will actually have to face into that, that business, and will have those lights glaring at us. I don't think, I also think that this is going to affect our resale value. There will be no more quiet nights, no more night skies. We'll have more trash and traffic, and I have to pick up trash every time as it is, because we do have a store out there every time I mow. And also, because we do have to mow our own dishes, ditches, we actually take our life into our hands because of the speeding traffic out there. And the end of my property will be right there where that driveway is, so that's going to be a trick to even maneuver around there. I understand that these men that own this land out there wadded up for one reason, that's to make money. They're not farmers or country people, or they wouldn't understand our, our concerns. Why, Mr. Farrell and Mr. Smith, if you're watching, do you not put in a nice residential development on 5 to 10 acres, brick homes similar to the ones that are adjacent to this spud? These homes, and I'll show you, I've put them on a poster, these are the homes that will be most affected. And they're on, all on acreages. I can't think of a more ridiculous location really for a Dollar General. We already have a convenience store there on the corner, and there are similar stores three miles in, in either direction from us, and they were there before I even moved out there. And as I said, I've been out there 30 years. I'm glad they're there, I guess, but, you know, I really don't shop there very often, only in emergencies, if I forgot to get gas when I was in town, if I forgot an ingredient and recipe, or if I want to get fresh cooked pizza. You see, people in the country plan their errands, a day trip to town, or errands while in town, another business. We have to go to town regardless of this, if we have a Dollar General out there. The area is too rural, really, to support both stores, and I would predict they would both end up going out of business. It's a matter of which one goes belly up first. And then we'll have two horrible ice wars out there that will bring crime into the area. I understand they have requested rezoning for another Dollar General on 149th and Chop Tar Road, which is three miles down the road. I don't know if this is some sort of tactic, or if they really want to put two Dollar General stores out there, but, you know, as far as we're concerned, I think that would be a better location, because there aren't homes developed right there on this corner. But the neighbors out there might have a different thought on that. And, you know, I've heard about the, the program that the planning department is putting on, the Green Infrastructure Initiative. It's an education program that the planning department is coordinating for business development and for the public. It's, you know, this proposal going in out there is going to create more wildlife habitat fragmentation in this rural part of Oklahoma City. And the area backs up to the Draper Lake Conservancy area. My hope, the first time this came around, was that maybe the city could somehow take this over. It's a beautiful piece of land, and at one time it was used for mountain bike trails. I know that Draper has since put in some mountain bike trails, but I have been on both trails, and I think you missed the boat on that one. And I'm almost finished. I know, you know your job's better than we do, but sometimes we all need to be refocused, so let me remind you what I have read. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to oversee the development of and to maintain an orderly relationship between residential, commercial, industrial, and public users of land to maintain public property values and to conserve the natural environment. Please don't let this happen to us. It's non-appropriate use for the area. Our needs have already been met by the stores already there. Thank you.
Thank you. Donald Osteen?
Now, if you guys will bear with me, I haven't done any speaking, so I was at the FAA Academy, so...
Well, give us your name and address for the record, and share with us new information that we didn't just hear from Ms. McDaniel.
Okay, my name's Donald Osteen. I live at 14820 South Anderson Road. And it's right across the street, my driveway is right across the street from this piece of property. And my concerns are, well, I have other concerns, too. The concerns are, when the list was made for mailing, it was supposed to have been within a thousand, it's supposed to start 300 feet and go out an increment of 100 till it reaches 1,000, to get 15 individuals. Well, there was people there, I went to Cleveland County and to the assessor and got maps, and set them out, took a compass, drew a thousand-foot circle around, and there were people there that was not notified. So me and some others went out and notified them and took up a petition, and what it ended up being is about 90% of the people out there in that area, out about two miles, really, don't want this store. But, now, my concerns are, since I live right across the street, and my son, he would have been here, but he's an air traffic controller and had a physical today, so... I want to thank you guys for allowing us to petition this, come in here and actually talk to you. I need to put my cheaters on, if you don't mind. There's no city sewerage out there, and there's also no city water, so that could be a problem out there with our wells and stuff. Increased load on the already overloaded police and fire department, it's not going to help them any, because they're overloaded in that area. They're, our nearest police is all the way across Draper Lake at a substation over there. Potential for an increase in crime. Whenever you bring in stores, you're going to have a potential for increase in crime. And me being right across from it, that's, I'll be right in the sights of that. No safe walkways alongside the road. The only, there's kids out there now that are walking up and down that road, and they have to walk in the ditch. Well, if you know kids like I do, they're going to be going to a store. And there's a, there's a potential for some kids to get hurt out there, hit by cars and whatever. There's no sidewalks at all. Increase of road maintenance on 149th and South Anderson Road. There is, we're having trouble with 149th right now with the potholes and everything else. It's just with the traffic for the building, the store would just increase that dramatically, because everybody's going to come into that area. And, and here's one of my bigger concerns, because it's right in front of my property. The water's going to sit, when you put blacktop on that property, and blacktop on that, and the building, the water's, instead of seeping into the ground, is going to run off down the side of Anderson Road, probably causing erosion and flooding. It gets that, there's a lower area out there, and it could cause flooding right in that area out there. Traffic congestion at 149th and Anderson Road will increase. We haven't had any accidents there now, but I can see it coming. And this is not what I had in mind after spending 40 years in the Air Force and the FAA when I moved out there, me and my wife to, to be in the country and stuff and raise our grandkids, is to open my front door and there'd be a Dollar General right across the street from me. So this is not what I had in mind when I stayed in Oklahoma City after I retired from the FAA. And as I told you, my son had already planned to build next to me, but he's up in the air on that. But I want to thank you again for allowing us to, for our inputs into this.
Thank you for coming down. Hope I say this correctly, Leisha Wright? You just, your name and address for the record, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Leisha Wright, and I live at 14,000 South Anderson Road. Basically, my neighbors have covered most of the issues in the area. My main concern is that any type of retail that they bring in out there, Dollar General, will increase the traffic, bring others from, that's visiting the lake to the area, and the unsafe conditions for our neighborhood. I don't believe that it will adequately handle, you know, our police, fire department. We have country schools out there with a lot of children in the area. Just basically unsafe conditions. I noticed here that they had not contacted the police department. The fire department had not responded. We have problems already for them to be able to come out to our homes when needed in a timely manner, because they just cover so much of the area as it is. And the building, this maximum building size, 9,100 square feet, there's just not much room there on that corner. We have quite a bit of traffic congestion there as it is. We have people that already travel that road at 90, 120 miles an hour. I've had them run off into my yard twice, into a telephone pole. I had to put a fence up, and this is country living. But basically, that's, you know, with the septic and the city, no city water, no city septic, no sidewalks, our fire department, police department, you know. I just request that you deny it, and I greatly appreciate the time you're listening to me this afternoon.
Thank you very much.
Just so I'm clear, are you kind of planning a 9,000 square foot store or a 1,000, 900 square foot store?
The building is 9,100 square feet.
The building itself is 9,100?
It's sitting on 2.49 acres.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners?
I would like to thank those of you who've come down today. And I, I was sort of taken by your comments about having fought this fight before. Actually, in the life of a city, eight years is quite a long time for you to be looking at this kind of development creeping up on you again. And while I totally understand and can empathize with your reasons for moving out to the country, you know, I think you're going to have to recognize that the city is coming out to meet you, and, and you're going to have to be diligent and vigilant in, in defending that lifestyle if it's important to you. There's really no question about that. And I guess the question for us is really whether, at this point, you know, this is premature for this area, I for one sort of think it is, but I'm really curious to hear what Councilman Allen has to say, Commissioner Allen has to say about it.
When I first looked at the application, you know, I really didn't see anything that I was concerned with. I am real familiar with that area. I did do some building several years ago out just south of that area. And I, the reason why we're, the staff has recommended denial on the application is because of so much C3 out there that is not utilized. And that's my concern. I didn't realize there was so much C3 in that area, and it's just sitting there. And I, I think with that in mind, that has changed my opinion some. Although, I, and like you said, I think residents in that area need to realize... Although, and like you said, I think residents in that area need to realize that's the way the city is moving somewhat, especially southeast. And, you know, and it's probably going to come up again because this is a pretty hot area right in there right now, and we're, you know, we're getting growth. I would like to see water in the area so we could have some, a little bit more fire protection. And one thing I was going to ask the applicant is if this was, application were approved, and I think it's a requirement anyway, if I'm not mistaken, that would have to be sprinkled, that building.
Actually, it does, it is not required to be sprinkled, but we do have plans to put a 10,000 gallon tank, storage tank underground with a dry hydrant, so we will have the ability to fight a fire on site with the water that we hold on site.
Okay, that's one thing that you want to start considering when you're in a remote area like that, especially on a well, where it's not in, almost emphatically, there's no requirement to do it, but we're going to ask you to do it.
Sprinkle?
You know, if that would be a part of the case that, you know, that we would approve it based on that. So we're doing residential houses the same way because of, you know, the fire situation that we've had the last two or three years. And, you know, it's just one of the things. So you would be willing to do that if this application were to be approved?
Be willing to sprinkle the building?
I'm sorry?
Are you asking if I'd be willing to sprinkle the building?
Yes.
That, I believe that's probably going to blow my budget if you ask me to do that. That's about a $45,000 add to this project. Now, I am, I have budgeted to put a 10,000 gallon tank in the ground with a hydrant on site, so a pumper truck can come out, hook to it, and pump our water onto our building. It's a non-combustible construction. The only thing in the building that could burn is the merchandise. I would, I would certainly have to go back and look at my budget again before.
That would not be good enough for me, but I'm only one vote on this commission, so.
Yes, sir. If I could, I'd like to address a couple of the issues that were brought up. Water and sewerage. We are planning to put a well and a septic system on site. The fire protection I just spoke of regarding the holding tank that we are prepared to bury on site with a dry fire hydrant. We are proposing to install a sidewalk along 149th Street on the south side of the property. As far as the traffic is concerned, these stores, Dollar General currently has 10,000 of these stores in operation today throughout the United States. They are the largest retailer in the United States. With that amount of stores they have in operation, they do quite a bit of research regarding how much traffic they generate per hour. These stores historically will generate 10 cars per hour all day long. They do have a peak hour between 5:00 and 6:00 in the afternoon that will generate 20 cars per hour. That is consistently one hour a day. So the stores are open from 8:00 AM till 10:00 PM, six days a week, and 9:00 to 9:00 on Sunday. So you're looking at 10 cars per hour all day long except that one peak hour in the afternoon. There was some concern regarding lighting. We do have lights on the side of the building. We do have lights on standards out in the parking lot. All of those lights are required by the retailer to have shields on them. Everything is pointed down to the ground. It's basically a security issue is, and safety for customers getting out to their cars. We are required by a retailer to provide a photometrics plan for each one of these sites, and we are not allowed to exceed .1 lumens at the property line. So the retailer is very aware of light pollution, and they fully intend to be as good a neighbors as they can with bedding up against residential areas, and they require us to maintain all of the light levels within the property line. So we go through that process. We have a computer program that basically lays out all of the photometrics for the sites, and we can't exceed .1 lumens at the property line. As far as screening between us and the residents to our east and our north, we are proposing, there we go, we're proposing quite a bit of landscaping and also a six-foot tall wood privacy fence that will run right along those two lines that you see where the landscaping are, just north of the building and just to the east of the parking lot. So we're making a very big attempt to be as friendly as we can to the neighbors. We're trying to screen everything, make it as soft as possible, and still be a convenience for the neighborhood. There is, we are looking at another, another site at 149th and Choctaw. That is not an alternate site, that is another site. We're building another store there, or trying to, proposing to build another store at that location. There are several other stores that we're proposing around Oklahoma City, and we have actually built a few here already. The Dollar General does want to come into Oklahoma City with a fairly large presence. I believe that the number that they're looking at is five to six stores whenever they're done with this area. This is one of them. This is one of their main, their main locations. This site, you'd mentioned there's quite a few other commercial sites along 149th. The locations of these stores are picked by Dollar General. They're not picked by us. We are the, we are the developer. We build the buildings, we lease them back to Dollar General, so we actually own the buildings. Dollar General tells us where they want to go, and it's our job to go out and get that piece of property and get the building permits. So as far as the location is concerned with this, it really, it's not in my hands. This is where they tell me they want to go, so it's my job to go get this done.
So they have looked at other, the C3 sites? Do you recall which ones they looked at?
No, to be honest with you, we've got acquisition people that handle that part of it, and they do scour the area, and there's quite a few requirements that have to be met in order for it to work for this developer, one being the cost of the property, the size of the property, the location of the property, car counts out on the main roads, and the median income within a certain distance from the stores. They don't typically share all that information with us. They tell us where they want to go, and it's our job to go get the site.
Have you sat down with the residents that are concerned?
Yes, sir.
Have you done any of that at all?
Have not. I would be more than happy to have a neighborhood meeting and sit down and explain everything that we're wanting to do and bring some presentation boards. I'd be more than happy to do that. I do that quite often, so it's nothing new for me, but we have not done that at this location.
Why didn't you do that initially?
Well, we really didn't think it was going to be this big of an opposition to this store because of the commercial that's catty-corner across the intersection. We didn't anticipate being this much pushback here.
Well, if we're going to have a meeting, let's have a meeting. If not, let's bow. I mean.
I don't see the, I mean, there are a lot of cases where we ask applicants and protesters to get together and discuss a situation, but there's that anyway, there's going to be a meeting of the minds here. Nick, go ahead.
Mr. Jones, I'm a big advocate of getting together and having a meeting of the minds, as you put it. But even if there is a meeting of the minds, what troubles me about this application is what we went through when we did the southeast sector plan and what the people said they wanted and didn't want, and then the points that have been brought up today. There's a bunch of existing C3 property there. I don't know that they have or have not looked at all of those. That's, that's not for us to consider, but, but that bothers me. Obviously, it bothered the staff. The fact that we're sitting here today with what is at 149th and Anderson makes it very premature in my mind, and as Janice pointed out. And then the other thing she pointed out that I think everybody needs to be aware of, yes, there is a migration that way. Things will change in time, but this application seems very premature to me for this location.
Well, don't disagree. I will say this, though. As I look at the map, you can go across the street and build a store right now, right? I mean, FYI, and there's, and it's been zoned that way for years, so I don't disagree about the fact that, so far as the comment about stopping the march, there's a store coming to that corner soon. I mean, and frankly, I own property in a very rural area into which Dollar General has come, and the location just is very similar to this location, and frankly, they're great neighbors. They're, they're, they're good operators. They build a very nice structure, and the lighting's good, the property maintenance. I mean, you could do a lot worse than Dollar General. Not saying it's appropriate for this area, but they're good, they're good citizens, so.
I absolutely agree, but you just reaffirm the point. There's plenty of existing C3 there. You know, and I know when it's site acquisition time, we're looking at go-home corners and all of those sort of things. And I'm not saying that the corner, catty-corner across streets any better or worse than this site. Obviously, they picked this site. They prefer it, but it sure does look like we have enough there already.
Well, Nick, your point about the southwest sector plan, I think, is a good one because...
Southeast.
I'm sorry, southeast. Because there were nodes identified where commercial was going to be encouraged, and it wasn't to be encouraged on every section line corner. That wasn't the way that people in the southeast sector wanted to see their area develop, and this would just be that exactly which they were trying to contain, if you will, and direct to certain nodes as opposed to having C3 on, or commercial on every section line corner. So I'm, I'm not in favor of this application.
On that note, I agree with what you're saying about the land that's zoned C3, and the reason that's been zoned C3 for so long is that there were no plans. Planning wasn't at all. It was just like, I have a piece of property, I'm going to get C3 and, you know, have a whole section line. It is there to the people that came here to speak against this application. It is there across the street, like Commissioner Hensley said, but this application is not appropriate, in my opinion, and particularly with the number of people that have signed a petition, so therefore I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to deny item 11. Cast your votes, and it is denied. We don't need any applause or anything, please.
Item 12 is PUD 1469. It's an application by the City of Oklahoma City to rezone property generally located from Lincoln Boulevard to North Lottie Avenue between northeast Fourth and northeast Eighth Street, from a multiplicity of different zoning districts to PUD 1469 and Ward 7.
Mr. Box?
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Ford Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. What our application for you today is, is a PUD overlay zoning that will encompass approximately 107 acres that will expand the current OU Health Science Center and the Oklahoma Health Center that lies to the north. This PUD is in furtherance of the previously adopted master plan that was adopted in 2007. Now, prior to filing the PUD application, we hosted a neighborhood meeting in July. At that neighborhood meeting, there was a good turnout. There was probably 85 to 90 people. The reason we wanted to have that meeting before we filed the application was to let the neighbors, not only within the subject site, but the neighbors in a close proximity know what was coming, the process that would happen, and what they could expect. Now, at that meeting, we explained to them what the PUD was and what it allows for. One of the key elements within this PUD is all of the existing homes and churches that lie within the subject area, and when I say subject area, what's on the screen is also before you, before you on the screen. Within that blue hashed line is the subject area. Now, in drafting this PUD, we took great care to recognize that there's existing homes and churches. So because of that, all the homes and churches that exist today, or when the PUD is approved, if it's approved, will be declared legally conforming. Now, that's significant. Instead of legally non-conforming, they will be legally conforming. What that means is they can continue to operate as a house or church forever. They can expand. They can remodel. They can sell their home. They can pass it down to the generations. What it ensures that the homes, or the lots that are vacant, cannot be redeveloped for residential purposes. If someone had a home and this PUD was in place, if it was destroyed by a fire, tornado, or anything like that, they'd be, they'd be able to redevelop that home. What this PUD does is ensure that the vacant lots are not redeveloped for residential purposes because this area is the natural progression of the Health Science Center and the Oklahoma Health Center. Now, what's significant to this exhibit that's before you is all of the lots that are shaded in any form of color are already owned by an entity that will be developing this in the future for some sort of health-related purposes. Now, this PUD matches the PUD to the north exactly, same sign package, the same design characteristics, the same uses, and the same intentions. So when we looked at this, we understood that this is a unique area, and it was going to take a unique PUD to ensure that everyone's current desires and current plans and future plans are met, and we truly believe that we've accomplished that with the ability for all the homes and churches to, nothing will change. Their home is still a residence, and they can still use it as a residence, and they can sell it, and in theory, that home can remain as a residential property for eternity. And so with that, we filed the application after our meeting, and we're now here before you. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about the PUD, and appreciate your time.
Questions first? Let's, we're here.
Go ahead. Well, I just, so as a snapshot, so what's residential today remains residential. So if my home is residential as of the day this is approved, the next day I tear down my home, it's still residential. I can't develop it for, I can redevelop it for residential, but I cannot develop it for another use. Is that right?
Well, I...
Is that how that goes?
You could redevelop it for the uses within the PUD if your intention is to...
Say I want to scrape it, but I'm a little slow and starting over. Okay? I want to scrape it. I want to get it tear down and build me a bigger house, a little later on, a different house, but I want to retain my residential use. Is that, can I do that?
I would defer to staff, but I believe the way the PUD is written is if you have a home now and the home goes away, but it's still your intention for that to be a home, then yes, it would be allowed, but that would ultimately be the staff's determination.
The PUD identifies all existing residential lots at the time, as of right now.
Right, so if there's a resident on it now...
They retain that residential zoning or any uses permitted.
Okay, so you just can't go from residential to office or otherwise?
Right.
But if the lot is vacant now...
If it's vacant now, it will not be eligible for any new residential development.
It's effectively rezoned?
Yes.
To whatever this use, so we're in effect, it's, okay, I understand the process at least now.
Theoretically, it sounds like we're rezoning all of the site within this 107 acres except for the property specifically being used and occupied as R1 sites today and the church facilities that lie within the 107 acres. Is that correct?
Not necessarily occupied.
I would argue that it, it's all being rezoned, but those homes and churches that are there retain their use.
Okay, they're conforming uses.
Correct, and that's what's significant, is they are legally conforming rather than a non-conforming use. A non-conforming use would be significant because if the home went away, you could never build it back, but because it's legally conforming, they would be able to do what I described.
I understand. I was describing it incorrectly, but the intent was...
Yes, sir.
Before we get too far along in this process, I just wanted to say, I spoke to Commissioner Williams this morning, and he was very much hoping that this matter would be continued. He was present at the meeting in July, July was it?
Yes.
And was disappointed that there was no follow-up to it. He had understood that the meeting was specifically to allow residents and people, interested parties, to give some input, and that it was sort of the beginning of a dialogue, if you will, but there apparently hasn't been any follow-up. There hasn't been, as so far as he could see, any real change in response to the meeting and so forth. So he was, he was disappointed that it was not really a process, and since he obviously could not be here today, he was very much hoping that this matter would be continued. So I wanted just to put that out there before we got too much further down the road here.
The subject of, I mean, the subject of continuing this was... The subject of continuing this was suggested to me briefly this morning. I've not talked to James. I did get an email from him just with his thoughts, but no suggestion of continuing the meeting. And at 11:00 in the morning, with the folks who were already planning to be here, I read in the newspaper yesterday that we're going to rent a bus to come down here. Whether that happened or not, I don't know, but the idea of asking them to come back again and again for continuances, I had a little problem with that being requested today, frankly, just as a courtesy to the protesters.
Well, it was my understanding from my conversation with him, that he had suggested to the applicant that it be continued, that they were not amenable to that suggestion. And so...
I can't answer that. Bob, you want to say something?
I did. I had a long conversation with Commissioner Williams, who said the same thing that Janice said, is that the meeting that you had with the neighbors was a disclosure of what the PUD is. The neighbors then asked questions, what happens to my property, what happens to me, and all these things. And James said, there wasn't any feedback, no follow-up. It just... It is what it is. So take it. My concern with this PUD is, I absolutely with the property owners, and the question that Commissioner Hensley just asked about, if I have a piece of property that's owned R4, you know, I can then put an apartment house on there, right? Or if it's O2, I can do an office. If I own a piece of vacant land, this is what concerns me. You're depriving a property owner of the right to use and develop that land that's not owned by the Health Sciences Center. You know, this is... In other words, you're taking property without any compensation at all. Unlike other major developers that go on and do this kind of thing, they buy the land. They make an offer for these places. They do this. This isn't eminent domain, but you really have, by this PUD, you've condemned these people's right to develop their property under the zoning that they already have by putting this overlay on it. And when you do this, if we adopt this without any kind of modification at all, what you have is, you have really put them in a position where their house, their piece of property, is now going to be worth nothing, very little. That's my concern, is if they... You said, oh yeah, they can build that, I can build another house. Well, you've got a whole campus being developed all around. Nobody's going to buy the house. I mean, it's not going to happen. And that's really my giant concern. Having said all of that, I am not in opposition to what's being planned. I mean, I think progress, and I think that the Health Sciences Center is an important aspect of this community, but you're not treating the people that live there that own property, you're not treating them fairly. And that's really why I think there should be some sort of significant dialogue between you guys and the property owners that are there about, what am I going to do now? You know, you may think that it's not a very, you know, nice piece of property that it will be... No. I mean, buy it.
Those are not our words.
You're condemning it. That's what you're doing. And that's why I think you need to get together with these people and have some sort of significant dialogue about what's going to happen to my land that I own, that I've lived on, some of them probably 50 years or longer, and they have been subjected to lots of unreasonable actions anyway in that neighborhood. And this is like another one of those things. And so I think you've got to talk about this a little bit more and get, you know, sharpen your pencil about what you're going to do with these people to make it fair to them.
Well, just to address a few points, your comment that we don't think this is nice land, those words have never been spoken. I certainly don't feel that way.
I didn't think it said that.
The applicant doesn't feel that way. No one involved with feels that way.
I didn't say that.
You insinuated...
No, I didn't say it.
As far as the process, when we had the public meeting, we answered every single question we could. There were a lot of questions that we frankly can't answer. Specifically, exactly what will happen to property values? We don't know. How much will our taxes go up? We don't know. But what we were able to answer is what the PUD does, what everything will be like moving forward, and we answered all those questions. And we told them when it was going to be filed, when the hearing would be, and we're willing to sit down now, between now and council, and meet with them and explain it to them. But I don't think we're taking anything. If you have a home, it can remain a home forever. A lot of the land that you see on this is already owned by one of the entities that will be doing the developing. There is a lot of vacant property out there, and the natural expansion of this thing is going south to where this is. And so it makes sense that those properties that are vacant, and quite frankly, have been vacant for a long time, retain the ability to do what they're going to be. And that's some sort of health-related, and that's what we've done here. But I certainly feel that we have been transparent, and we have met with the neighbors and answered every question we can. And we're willing to meet again, but a lot of questions, quite frankly, we can't answer. And I don't know the exact dollar figure that a property value is going to be affected. I don't know what the tax commission is going to do to their piece of property. And we won't know. That's not a question we can answer. But the questions that we can answer, we did. And we're still willing to sit down and meet.
David, let me try to understand your graphic here. You say anything in color is already owned by one of the agencies. So that leads me to the conclusion that anything that is black within the blue dotted line is not owned by one of the agencies, is therefore privately owned and is presently zoned residential.
Yes, sir.
And it will retain that legal conforming residential designation. Now, here's my question. I can't sit here and count black boxes, but how many lots are we talking about, and how many of those lots have existing residential structures on them?
Diane McDaniel, Oklahoma City, 617 North Everest Avenue, and I represent the JFK Neighborhood Association, and these are the residents of that area. Now, I'm going to relate to that one question. There are 84 homes that are occupied in that particular area. Three churches, one of which is East Sixth Street Christian Church, that has been there for 93 years. The other is New Hope Baptist Church. It has been in that area for 83 years, a beacon of hope to that particular northeast There are a number of vacant lots. I counted about 20, and that's supposedly, by the City of Oklahoma, that's supposed to be infield housing. In order to keep a neighborhood going, one must always have new development. If there is no development, there is no neighborhood, because we will soon pass on. And so I'm asking, and when Mr. Box said he wanted to talk with us, there was never an agreement. They never came and talked to us as individual homeowners or stakeholders to discuss that, because some of the neighbors there, myself included, were willing to sell and negotiate with you all. But they did not come and address us, and it made us really feel little cheap and that we were unimportant. And so our... We're asking the council to consider not rezoning, but we're not against progress. We want to see the city progress and move forward. I think it's wonderful. But include us in your planning. That's all we're asking for. And we are showing that by show of support of those that could be here. Everybody in those 84 homes are retired, 31 years DHS Child Welfare, and 20 years the U.S. Army Reserve. And I cannot go back to start all over again. So I want to be compensated for my property as well as others, so I can move, but again, remain in the northeast quadrant of the city where I feel safe and secure.
Let me just ask you one question, and we'll go back to Mr. Box.
Yes, sir.
You live within the boundaries...
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay. Just a yes is fine.
Yes.
Thank you. That helps me. David?
Yes, sir. Well, addressing the point that we haven't talked to them, I would disagree.
Well, I'm more interested in the numbers I just heard.
Of the 84 homes?
Yes.
The 84 homes can stay and remain, and the 84 homes...
There are 84 occupied homes in that area now?
I have not...
I accept your number.
Well, I accept those numbers, and I'll accept your estimate of there are 20 vacant residential lots. So we're talking about a little over 100 residential lots here, plus the three churches.
And the only real impact are to those vacant lots. Those homes and churches can remain a home and church forever and ever and ever. If they intend to use that as a home, they can sell it as a home. They can pass it down. Nothing will change from the way that they are enjoying their home today.
And I am... I give you credit, David, for the fact that these, you know, we're going to keep it as legal conforming as opposed to legal non-conforming. I think that is a big deal, okay? I'm all in favor of that. What I was trying to figure out was, obviously, this is a very large area, and I was trying to figure out how many owner-occupied homes were already there, and then how much impact there would be on vacant residential land. And I now have that answer. I appreciate it.
Commissioners, the discussion, we do have people signing up to speak, including Ms. McDaniel, who's already here.
Either way, I think there probably will be plenty to say about this, whether we do it now or later. It's kind of up to you.
Me?
Mm-hmm.
I get only one vote.
Oh, well, I mean, in terms of now or later, I think it's up to you. You're controlling the meeting, so...
Well, I think we should hear from Ms. McDaniel. Do you have other concerns?
Yes, sir.
Look, David, if you'll sit down, we'll hear from Ms. McDaniel, give her a chance to...
Do I need to restate my name, sir?
I think you've done it.
Okay. The Oklahoma City Planning Department, 2020, said that they would develop an infield housing to keep that community, a neighborhood, a traditional neighborhood. However, the master plan for the Oklahoma Housing Health Center has other plans, of which they did not discuss with us. And it is in direct conflict with the city's plan and their plan. Now, you say, we have 84 homes. Yes, sir. There are vacant places. But when we went to the Red Cross and met with them, they said, I don't care if you do have land to the left or the right, you can't build anything. And I'm thinking, am I living in a democracy? Am I living in the United States of America? You mean to say, I have property that I've purchased, and I can't build any new structure? Now, given that, if I can't build any structure, I can improve that structure, but as the encroachment of the university and the other four entities go south to Forest Street, sir, who's going to want to buy a home in that area with that encroachment? So the neighbors and I suggested that we get a realtor or realtors and look at perhaps selling that property, because we want to see the improvement as well. But still, no one has come to us and talked to us with any great clarity. And I guess I was insulted when someone told me I could not build on property that I own. How would you all feel if that was the case? I'm going to just change Mr. Klaus. I'm just going to come in, change your decor to purple and pink and red, which is my color, and not ask for your input. You all know that's wrong, don't you? Right? And so I'm saying to... I'm not saying I don't want progress. We do. We want to be treated fairly. We want to be treated honestly. We want to be given consideration as stakeholders in developing this new area of green space and technology, but we haven't been given that opportunity. So I would suggest, most humbly and graciously, if you would put this on pause and let the entities come together with the neighbors and discuss perhaps relocation, and they can have, with all sincerity, with good feelings toward one another. Because that area was deemed unfit back in the '60s, and they moved people out. And I was one of the recipients when the city said, we're going to redevelop that, and we want single moms and homeowners to go back in. So 27 years ago, single mama and my daughter, we moved. I have three more years to pay on that house, and it'll be mine. And so it was like a slap in the face, okay? So I humbly ask that you give us that consideration. Put it on the table. Let's go back to the table of understanding and negotiate, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David?
Yes, sir.
Before I hear from the next person, two questions. What's your timing for this? And is there relocation funding as a possibility? Is that something that comes out of this in any way or not?
No, sir. There's no relocation funding. There's no acquisition going on.
I understand, but I also understand what the protesters are saying, and the impact on them. Okay, thank you. We'll go to Janofia Lewis. I hope I said your name correctly. Please come forward. And correct me if I didn't say your name properly.
Correct.
Okay. If you pull the microphone down and give us your name and address.
My name is Janofia Lewis, and I have a business located at 1920 Northeast Eighth and Martin Luther King. It's currently a restaurant, and I'm trying to get approved for a license to sell beer and wine at my restaurant. It's a... I worked for FIA for 30 years. I retired, and this is my retirement project, and I want to see it fulfilled, having a restaurant. It's a family restaurant, and I wanted to be able to have the northeast side, have something nice over there for them to attend.
Can you tell me again just where it is?
It's right on the corner of Eighth and Martin Luther King.
Okay.
You have a separate application for that, correct?
Yeah. It's a... The number is...
Yeah, you're coming up a little later on our agenda.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Jeremy Beckers. Again, if you'd give us your name and address, please.
My name is Jeremy Beckers.
Okay.
Sorry about that. And it's 1100 Northeast Fifth Terrace. I'm a member of the neighborhood in question. I have one quick question. I'm looking at the map. Now, the blue line denotes the proposed rezoning?
Need to look, need to talk to us if you don't mind.
I'm sorry. Sorry. I was just trying to make the clarification. I think my property may be slightly outside the zone, the true, the actual rezoning, so this relates to me indirectly. I think the concern... I've been a part of these meetings, and we've had about five or six meetings that I've attended where we've tried to talk about the situation, and we were expecting some kind of representative from the government or from anyone to talk to us about this process. And... anyone to talk to us about this process, and that has been lacking. I think that that is definitely true. I think that, for, for me, being a homeowner in that area, I definitely see the impact if no further residential development were to, to occur. I think the possibility that it could depreciate my, my property and reduce my, the value of my property is, is definitely a possibility. I think that for a lot of folks that live there, these houses are old, most of them in my, in my area and nearby, they are older properties that will need some kind of renovation or rebuilding, or possibly, there, there is a major possibility of some kind of new structures needing to be built. So I, I'm going to express my consolidat, consolidarity with those people who have that kind of concern. I think all of us are open to any kind of discussions, and I don't think there's any way that it wants to impede the plans of the, of the Health Sciences Center, but I think a reasonable amount of discussion would be in order, and I think all of us are willing to do that.
Okay.
I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who didn't sign up who'd like to talk to us about this?
Yes.
Please give us your name and address, if you would.
My name is Rosa Tillman, and I live at 1131 Northeast 7th Street. My hu, house was built in 1907, and it was a legacy handed down to my husband, who is deceased. I'm, I'm for the new development at the Health Science Center, but when we went to the Red Cross meeting, they said, "You can do what you want to, with your property, but we don't have any money to buy you out, and we wanna zone it, which is going to depre, for a commercial, which is gonna depreciate our property. So if you really want this area, owe you, uh, and the other conglomerates, all you have to do is buy us out, relocate us, and we'll be fine, because we know that we might have to use those facilities there. But don't treat us like we're eminent domain, and we have no rights, and that's all we're
Commissioners, no one else has signed up to speak? Discussion? On what, on what you wanna do? Do you wanna act on this? Do you want to continue it for discussion? I mean, it's up to the will of the commission.
Commissioner Hensley was just pointing out to me, the city of Oklahoma City is the applicant here, so it seems to me that we would certainly be well within our rights to instruct the city to go meet with these people and, you know, dialogue with them. I, I guess the, the part of the city is troubling me, everybody wants the Health Sciences Center to do well, everybody wants it to expand. It's a jewel in Oklahoma City's crown, and it has not been an unqualified boon to that neighborhood over there, however, and having represented urban renewal in the past, I'm fairly familiar with the long, sad history of the JFK neighborhood, and I think these people have been around this block a few times. I, I really find it almost astonishing that they would find themselves in this position again, where they're sort of being told that, for lack of a better or more precise designation, the government is gonna come in and sort of spread this plan over them, whether they like it or not, and they're going to take steps which, you know, you can say you don't know what will happen to property values, but I, I find that, if not disingenuous, a little, a little hard to take, and I can well imagine that they do as well. I can't foresee any situation or circumstance in which their property values are going to increase as a result of this. The whole point and purpose of it is that the land is desired for the expansion, and they don't want the property values to increase, so they're putting a cap on them so that they won't. When they get around to spending the money to buy them up, they won't have to spend more than they want to for them. You know, the problem I have with that is that it's not being called what it is, and I, I think that it was put very eloquently that, you know, what they're seeking here is to be treated fairly and honestly, and given consideration as stakeholders, and that sounds imminently sane and reasonable to me. So I certainly am not prepared to vote in favor of this today, and wouldn't be prepared to vote in favor of it in its current state. We, we have talked, Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Bright and I have talked a number of times about the developments going on downtown and, and these neighborhoods that are sort of marginalized, and the neighborhood around the Health Sciences Center is one that we have visited and talked about specifically. The existing Health Sciences complex is, is, is sort of plopped down where it is, it does not invite in its neighbors, it doesn't dialogue with its surroundings, it's not in any way porous, it's, it's very institutional, it's almost like a prison sitting there. It's beautiful when you're looking at it from the outside, from the other side, but when you're looking at it from the neighborhoods that surround it, it's horribly sort of walled off and institutional and forbidding, and I, for one, would like to see some part of this process be dedicated to looking at how that could be less so in the future. If it's going to expand, which I think everybody thinks it will, and one even wants it to, then it, it needs to fit into its surroundings much more than it has up till now, and I think the process needs to be much more fair and reasonable to the people who live in that area.
Anyone else? Nick?
I agree with much of what Janice said, there's a, a practicality to this also. When I study this map that we have on the screen, and I see these 100 plus or minus black lots scattered in among the greens and the reds and the purples and all this, the practical reality comes to me is, sure, it's privately owned, and right now, without zoning, people can do anything they want to with it. They can build, they can try to rezonate themselves, they can, can do whatever. But if you look at it from an investment standpoint, the vast majority of this land is already controlled by, as you called it, Janice, the government, all these agencies, and there is going to be no investment money coming in, redevelopment money coming in to redevelop this in a single-family neighborhood setting. I just can't see that that would be economically practical. Lady mentioned, you know, they should come buy us out. I, I think that'd be a great idea, I'm not suggesting they do that, obviously, there's financial constraints and whatnot. But that also cuts both ways. If you really wanna sell, you can market your own property, you can go to them or just try to market to somebody else. I, I don't really believe most of this property is highly marketable because of who already owns all the other land around you. Uh, you know, maybe the horse is already out of the barn, if you will. That said, I think there are some practical considerations going back and forth for, for both the city, these agencies, and the, and the property owners, and I think you guys need to sit down and figure out what you wanna do, because I, I think the die is cast. Too much of this land is already occupied in all these other colors, and there's not, there's only 84 houses left. I don't see a resurgence of individual family housing on the remaining 20 lots that are That's what troubles me about this application, and maybe the timing is not correct, maybe we are premature, maybe we're not. Obviously, the applicant wants to go forward, but it appears there needs to be at least some more dialogue. But practically speaking, I, you know, I think the die is cast.
I'm looking to weigh in on that with those comments with Commissioner Powers and Commissioner Gales, it's leading towards what we've talked about at the very outset, about continuing this matter, because if you wanna have a vote on it, I'm voting no, because I can't in good conscience look at, what, 105 pieces of private property, that an overlay is going to happen that's going to restrict any ability to do anything with that property other than paint it, you, I mean, and I'm...
Bob, that's my point.
Well, but wait, no, let me just make this little kind of other side comment about another, you know, rather well-known applicant who's had to come in over and over and over and over and over, and buy property, buy property, buy property. Can you imagine the protest if that particular application had been, "I'm gonna overlay all this, and you can't do anything with your property, and I'm not gonna do anything at all, I'm not offering to buy it," et cetera? It would never happen, you know? So is this a vulnerable area, perhaps? But I think it needs to be continued, because again, in the, what I said at the outset, I'm not opposed to the expansion of the Health Sciences Center, I admire that organization significantly, but this has lots and lots of elements in it that are just, to me, overbearing and, and have ignored what the other property owners really would experience if this was put together. So I'd continue that.
Bob, I don't disagree with that, except that you say they can't do anything with their property.
Well...
They can't, it's, it's legal conforming property. I think that is a major point of this. That said, that only works if you have a structure on it, it doesn't work for the 20 vacant lots.
Well, and one other thing, too, then, I think this is a big consideration, there's how many vacant lots? 20? I own 20 lots in there, I can't do anything with them, all I can do is mow them, you know, and I, I can't see that that's right in any respect.
Well...
All right, I'll make a motion to continue it for a month. Let's just get it, let's, we're not gonna, really gonna vote on it or continue it.
Second.
Sounds, thank you, Bob.
Okay, any further discussion, commissioners? Cast your votes, 30-day continuance, and it's continued.
And I, for one, would like to be, at, at least be aware of the meetings that are going forward with the neighbors. I, I would like to attend and, and sit in on some of those, see how that's going.
We'll invite everybody.
I will say, there seems to be a disconnect between what one side says, the information they've provided, and what the other side perceives they've received, so...
Bit of a gap.
There's not a meeting of the minds as to the information exchange, that's certain. So I'd like to see a little better performance on that, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13 is PUD 1465. This is an application by High Chaparral Development Company, to rezone 5200 East Memorial from AA Agricultural to PUD 1465 in Ward 7.
Good afternoon.
My name's Charlie Allen, I'm with Allen Engineering, Dan Miners with High Chaparrals here also to answer any questions. This PUD originally started out as a straight zoning to RA, we're proposing 16 lots and approximately 18 acres. We changed it to a PUD specifically to allow property lines to the center line of road, and the, and the reason I'm saying that is because the next item is the, associated with this property, so we don't have any objections to any of the TEs, happy to answer any questions. Maybe we'll have more discussion about the property line and item 14, so.
Okay, commissioners, no one has signed up, any discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve item 13, cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 14 is C6354, preliminary plot of Iron Creek in Ward 7.
Again, Charlie Allen, Allen Engineering, Dan Miners also, High Chaparral. We agree with all the TEs except for item number five, TE item five. Again, the reason we submitted the PUD that was just approved was to allow property lines to extend to the center line of road. We're still gonna have right-of-way easements, utilities and so forth, and also the setback, which would be a 65 rather than a 40-foot from the right-of-way line. The real reason, or one of the, the main reasons the developer wants to do this is to, instead of the homeowners association paying taxes on the private road, each individual property owner would pay the taxes for the roadway. It's just one less item that the property owners association has to deal with. There's some, you know, and I understand that, you know, the policy and staff would rather not have that, I mean, there's some, and I agree on, on smaller subdivisions, it's probably more appropriate. This is a 3/4 acre minimum lot, the actual lots net out to be 3/4 acres. The smallest lot we have is .84, which allows .09 for easement and right-of-way. These would be no different than if the, the lot were on a section-lined road. If you live on a section-lined road, you own to the center of the street, there's a 33-foot statutory right-of-way, but you own and maintain all that roadway. From a, from a surveying standpoint, when the, when property corners are in the middle of the road, they're more easily identified, they don't get knocked out by utility companies, people doing their own landscaping. I can tell you from a, from a surveyor, it'd be, it's a lot easier to go down the center of the road and find your property corner. If you're a homeowner, you can go out to the, with your, with your neighbor, you can go out to that corner, stand in the middle of the road, we only have 16 lots, you're not gonna get run over, it's a private gated community, you can stand out there together and look down your property line, actually stand on that corner.
JJ, how big an issue is that for staff, since you put the TE in there?
It's a requirement of the subdivision regulations not to include the road easement in the, in the...
So we take a variance to...
Correct.
Delete TE 5, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Might add also, Mr. Miners develops the air station to the east there, lives there, is actually planning on, you know, building homes in this, probably will move into this development also. He's developed in Logan County, he's got Cedar Lake, Sweetwater Springs, Charter Oaks, and the majority of those all have the center line or the property line going to the center of the road, and has never had any problems. So it's, it's really a preference, we don't wanna, we don't wanna sit up here and argue about it, but we would like to entertain, especially since that's why we changed our zoning to a PUD, so.
Commissioners, discussion, no one signed up.
Mr. Chairman, in light of there's a few lots here, I'm not sure the variance really does all, makes a whole lot of difference. With that said, I'll move a variance for TE 5.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to vary TE number 5, cast your votes.
Now, move the application.
And we have a motion and a second to approve item 14, cast your votes, and that's approved. Russell, let me ask you a question. Anyone on a deadline this afternoon? We've got a number of items yet to go, and you have to leave at 4 o'clock. Anyone else who has a...
About 3 o'clock.
Not even at 3:02, we'd be adjourned, yes. In that case, I'm gonna wanna move up items 51 and 52, so you might notify Kathy to...
Um, yeah, I'll give her some notice, she had a meeting that ended at 3, so that would probably actually work well for her.
Let's do that.
All right, I'll give her half an hour then. I'll give her half an hour then. Okay, we're just going to go along text here. Items 15 through 18 have been continued until September 27th. Item 19 is a companion item to item 45, so we're going to move up item 45. And that is PUD 1470. It's an application by VR Horton Homes, rezoned 8100 West Hefner, from PUD 763 to PUD 1470 in Ward 1.
Lindsey Suttle with Crafton Toll representing the applicant. The subject property is currently under a master PUD allowing for R3 zoning. Our new proposed PUD allows for single-family residential. We reviewed the staff report and there are no unfavorable considerations. We do request that we revise one section of the PUD, Section 9.5 regarding access regulations. It currently reads that we should have a divided entryway. And per the staff report for the accompanying preliminary plat, there is a TE from staff asking us not to have a divided entry but to match the geometry of the street across from Hefner.
Lindsey, you have in the PUD, you want to skinny these lots down to 5,000 as opposed to the 6,000 in the regular R1 zoning. That gets it awfully tight. And I understand the economics of lot maximization, but is that really necessary?
The majority of the lots are 6,000 square feet or larger. We have one row of lots that are slightly under that requirement.
And where are those lots?
Those are the lots on the east side.
East side.
On the east or the west? I mean, so they're the lots that back up to the large lots back behind it? Is that right?
No, no, the other direction. Block 5.
At Lot 5?
Block 5.
Now, that back, that property, so it's...
The property to the east is undeveloped.
Right.
Property to the west is where you have your development.
Right. Now, do you own the property back to the east? Is your developer on that property?
No.
If they're smaller lots, they're not smaller by much because they all appear to be 50 feet wide, is that right, Lindsey?
Yes.
Well, but there are several that are 110, 111 feet deep.
Right, along that one side, they're a little bit shallower.
I can't read this.
Yeah.
When I was going over my packet on my desk, I have a magnifying glass and I could, and I noticed a lot of 52, 53, 54 hundreds. Lots sprinkled in there, and that's why I raised the question.
Make them a little bit wider and you'd have a couple fewer lots, but they'd all be 6,000 square feet.
It seems that the neighborhood was not, the Harvest Hills folks were not... Have you talked to them? Have they protested on this?
We spoke to someone just before the meeting here.
And are they...
We have someone signed up for 19, which is the companion piece of this one.
Now, which one are we talking about first here? Are we talking about 19 now?
Talking about 45 right now.
I know.
Because this is the zoning request before the plat.
Okay, so 19 is the zoning?
No, 45 is the zoning.
45 is the zoning.
19 is the plat, preliminary plat, same crap.
All right. And you're going, you are agreeing to connect down at the bottom to the street that runs in front of the elementary school, is that right?
Yes, yes, we are.
All right. Well, I'm too not particularly crazy about that density along the, as admittedly, it does not abut against the residential back to the west, but I still think it will.
We don't know what it will abut against eventually.
Pardon me?
We don't know what it will abut eventually.
That's true. It's commercial back to the west.
We do know what's to the west.
Yeah, we do, exactly.
That's existed.
Right.
And that's where the tight lots are, or some of the tight lots.
Right. I agree.
I'm not sure why we've run smaller lots at all. I mean, why I raised the point. The property to the east is zoned commercial in the...
But the small lots are on the west line.
I thought there was a question about what the property to the...
Yeah, you were right.
There are some, there's several scattered around when I was looking at it with a magnifying glass. I can't point them out now because frankly, I can't see them.
The current PUD allows for R3 zoning, which is even more intense than what we're proposing.
Well, my argument there would be the difference between R2 zoning is you're building duplexes to increase your density, or you're increasing your density with single-family on smaller plots.
It is a different look. Because the density itself, it's the lot size, because you're, how many small lots do you have, Lindsey? I know you said the majority of, you know, when you come and make statements such as the majority of, I would suggest that you have a number. Because I'm going to ask the question.
I don't know exactly how many.
The big plat? I don't see that we're getting anything for the PUD.
I don't either. That's the point. That's kind of where we were when we discussed it, and that's, I think that's the general consensus of the neighbors also.
Yeah, I'm inclined not to approve the PUD.
Well, it could be, have one minor change and it would be all right with me.
Mm-hmm. Reduce the number of lots?
Well...
Make them all...
Make them all 6,000 is perfect.
Or that section that says 5,000, raise it to 6.
Yeah.
That's, works for me.
Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll. In regards to the lot size, again, like, we are hearing the PUD first, right?
Yes.
So, in terms of the use in the current PUD, obviously, going back to the difference between the two PUDs and two applications you have, is we have one current PUD that allows and permits for not only R3 but R4M, which is obviously a medium density apartment complex.
Mm-hmm.
So, in change, what we are asking in essence is we're trying to downzone the property, and we're going from what could be multiplexes and apartments down to single-family homes. So, we could look at a possibility, when you want to talk traffic, when you want to talk aesthetics, and talk about multiple-story buildings and those sort of things, we can look at that with 24 dwelling units per acre that would be permitted, or the four dwelling units per acre that we're looking at here. So, we do have, I'm going to say, a third of the property potentially that's slightly under 6,000 square feet, and if you look at the lot dimensions, when we say under 6,000 square feet, we're probably talking about a couple hundred square feet. But nonetheless, when you start to look at this application versus what could be built there today, we think that it's a great plan for this area. We've addressed the traffic, you look at it, it makes good sense to us. So, that's the reason, and that's the purpose of the application, and I think that's the difference you have between the two PUDs. To answer your question on the west, obviously, there's a common area there, there is existing homes, but again, going back to the current PUD and what it would permit, looking over into those backyards, now you have single-family houses, you have a buffer, it drains away in a common area there that still buffers there. On the east side, you still have the current PUD, which is commercial, and still some of the multifamily left.
Who actually maintains that buffer, that common area?
It would be our development. It's part of, it will be platted as common area with our plat.
And that's...
So, owned and maintained by our...
That's along the back of all those smaller lots?
Yes.
Would it be each property owner or would there be the entity, wouldn't it?
Homeowners Association.
Okay. Commissioners, preference? Father George Miley, is he here? If you'd pull the microphone down, give us your name and address. I assume you want to talk to us about both this case and the one that follows?
That'll do. Father George Miley, I'm with the Anglican Church of the Holy Cross, 10509 North Council. And for the record, I live at 11305 Merkwell Drive in the development to the north. My concern partly is with poor planning that was done when the church was built, in the fact it was built low, and there is a drainage problem along there. The west bound of this property is a stream that goes across Hefner. They've just redone the bridge there for that. And I feel that with all of that under roof or on the street, that there should be more attention paid to retention. I sure don't want it to flow toward the church because I got enough problem now. I say aye, I'm technically retired. But that's the only concern that I have, is that drainage. And your lot size coincides directly with that because that west side, well, I tell you, that concerns me because that water starts running, it runs.
Thank you.
We are providing detention for this site, so the runoff will be equal to the historic or less post-development.
Commissioners?
So, where's your detention?
There will be two detention ponds. One is in the...
Common area A?
Yes.
And common area B?
Common area C.
She means C?
Over there, yes.
And then, the common area E is really the stream that already exists, right?
Yes.
And so, I haven't seen the property, so is it treed? It's already got trees on it and stuff like that? No trees? Pretty blank right now. It looks, it doesn't look like there's anything out there.
No, just the drainage way.
Okay.
I think if I were in the neighborhood next to this one, I would much rather have what they're proposing than what could be built right now. That's just my two cents.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 45. Cast your votes.
Did you want to speak? Were you here to talk on this? I thought there was one other person that wanted to speak, but maybe I'm wrong.
I'm not aware of it.
Raise your hand. Are you here to speak on the... Okay. Maybe we ought to hear him. I thought I saw him raise his hand or... You want to come up?
Yeah. We're going to take a 15-minute recess and then take up items 51 and 52.
Okay, wait a minute, he wants to...
You want to talk on this one?
Yeah, on the one that we were about to vote on.
We did vote on.
Well, but we voted on the zoning.
Yeah.
The companion is 19. We should probably do that before we...
All right, let's do that.
Before we vote.
All right, go ahead, Lindsey.
Yeah, let's, okay, but, did you want to speak? Okay, go ahead. Oh, sorry. You go ahead.
Lindsey Suttle with Crafton Toll representing the applicant. We've read through the staff report and are in agreement with all of the TEs.
Okay, now, if you'd give us your name and address for the record and tell us what your concerns are?
My name is Chad Seatorne. I live at 10405 Harvest Moon in Harvest Hills, just south of that proposed plan. And I was actually here today, I'm the president of our HOA in Harvest Hills, and our concern was the connection of Harvest Moon up into that new subdivision because the traffic flow coming into the school. Right now, the, if you look, come out of council on 104th, they, when the kids come in, or the parents come in to pick up their kids, they come in on 104th, they go up Harvest Moon Avenue, and they circle through the school to pick up their kids. And our concern was the extra traffic. We do, by no means we welcome homes versus the medium density of the apartments and stuff like that, so we have no meaning want to try to deter that from happening. Our only concern was just the traffic flow from, on new division coming in from Harvest, Harvest Moon.
Thank you.
Back to that, you don't own the property to the east, right?
Correct.
Now, isn't there already an access, is there an access gate on the, from the council back into that property currently? Or do you know?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so there's, well, I mean, frankly, we have to provide access down to 104th. One, it's part of our policy. Secondly, they won't have, there's no other way unless they can take access across property that they currently don't own or control.
And Harvest Moon is built to a collector width. It's a 32-foot street, and we are continuing it as a 32-foot street where we are tying on, so it will handle the traffic.
That is a collector street, isn't it?
Right.
It exists as one now.
Yes.
Actually, that may facilitate traffic flow back up to Hefner because it'll be cutting through the new neighborhood. So, frankly, they're going to get more traffic in the new one than they did in the old one. It may help, it may help existing Harvest Hills right now to improve that flow that way.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioners? Motion?
One other thing, when we were talking about the PUD, we still needed to amend what was written for the access regulations because on this staff report, it does, TE number nine asks us not to have a divided entry, so we need to update the PUD to state that a divided entry or matching the opposing geometry of the street across the way.
We'll fix the language in the PUD. It should have been written to be like an option. If you do have a divided entry, then we want the 20 feet on each side.
Okay.
So, you'll make that change, JJ?
Yeah.
To TE 9?
All right.
Action?
I'm going to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 19, and TE 9 will be rewritten. Cast your votes. That's approved, and we'll be back in 15 minutes.
Okay, we're reconvening the meeting.
investments of mixed-use development, and we wanted to retain that possibility in this location. So that was the purpose of this proposed amendment to the downtown Urban -- Central Business District Urban Renewal Plan.
Well, the train station is where it is and is clearly identified, and that's the site that's going to be used. And at this point, I think we probably ought to adopt this resolution.
I don't disagree. I've received and looked at the material that was sent in the packet about the, you know, all the things he had done, and that seemed appropriate. The only question that I had, which really doesn't relate to that, is the width of the street in front of it. And that's been talked about, talked about, talked about, and I think that no resolution is still a very wide, somewhat impassable street for pedestrians to go across. Is there anything in this land acquisition proposal in the amendment, Kathy, that has anything to do with that street?
No. No, that has been discussed a great deal, and I think that the city has plans to address the pedestrian nature of that street, but that really isn't a part of this amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan.
But I don't -- I really don't have any trouble with this amendment.
Well, in that case, I'll take a motion to approve it. Second, okay, we have a motion, second, approve the resolution, item 51. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you. And item 52 is a resolution determining the proposed first amendment of the Court Assure Urban Renewal Plan to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan of the city as amended and recommending its approval to the City of Oklahoma City, City Council.
Again, this item is a proposed amendment to the Court Assure Urban Renewal Plan. In the Urban Renewal -- in the Court Assure Plan, there was an acquisition area that was initially defined in the plan that included what was proposed to be the MAPS III park and the buffer areas adjacent to the park and a few other parcels. We have proposed amending the plan to include the acquisition area for the proposed location of the new convention center. I think we've included information in your packet about the process that the MAPS III subcommittees and the advisory board have gone through to identify the site for -- the proposed site for the convention center. The subcommittee, the Convention Center Subcommittee, went through a lengthy process and examined several different sites and finally determined that the site adjacent to the Chesapeake Arena was the preferred site by the subcommittee for the proposed convention center. They made that recommendation to the City Council. The City Council approved that recommendation and directed staff to begin acquisition. Again, in this case, we are looking to provide the maximum amount of flexibility for the acquisition. There is the potential, especially with this location, that the convention center will have a certain amount of mixed-use development associated with it. The site really has four sides. There's no real blank wall that we can assume will be developed as a part of this convention center. We're going to have to have retail or mixed office use or -- and certainly a convention center hotel will be a part of that development. And again, what we were looking at is to provide the city with the maximum amount of flexibility so that the design of the convention center could best maximize the importance of this site. So that was the reason for the requested amendment to the acquisition area, and that's what's before you today.
Kathy, has the consultants been hired yet for the convention center design and the planning for it?
No, they have not. They're -- the city is in the process of hiring a consultant to do some of the conceptual planning for the convention center, the massing, the where's the best place for the hotel, where would we put structured parking, you know, kind of answer all of those kinds of questions so we can get an idea of how this thing can be developed. And that consultant has not been hired yet.
Let me make a comment, Mr. Chair. Is that I appreciate the materials that were given to us. I could hardly read some of it. The typeface was so tiny. But here's -- at the meeting on August 9th, you know, I think our frustration was well said about what is this, what's this all about? We haven't been talked to, consulted with on any issue relating to the convention center or where it's going to be, and it seems to me that's appropriate for a planning commission to consider that. And so we said, continue it. That was August the 9th, and here it is today, and there's not been one meeting scheduled where we could have a back-and-forth discussion about, okay, tell me what you're thinking about retail. What does that mean to the Boulevard? How does it interreact with what people's expectations, certainly my expectation when we approved the Court Assure Amendment to begin with, is that Court Assure means from there to there, and now you've plunked down a convention center in the middle of the core, and then you've -- in other words, I thought that there would be a study session or something scheduled so that we, planning commissioners, could understand just what was going on. I appreciate the work of the committee and the staff, to the extent that the staff has been engaged in that, but that's kind of my -- still, I'm in the same place I was on August the 9th.
I would, I guess, concur with Commissioner Wright because I think we're still early in the process in terms of how these projects are going to work together. Each of the projects has a different subcommittee, has different consultants. They all need, I think, to be interacting together to determine how these things function as a whole because, I mean, how the built environment works is something that we think about, planning staff thinks about, consultants think about, and we're not there yet. These projects have been, you know, basically developed in silos, each one separate from the other. And if we've got consultants coming on board, I think we ought to take another 60 days, let these things take place here back from the consultants. And I still understand that some members of the convention subcommittee want to revisit the relocation criteria and think about, or at least completely satisfy themselves that this is the right site, and if not, think about what is. So it seems to me we're still a little early with this, and I'd suggest a 60-day continuance. Nick, do you want to add something?
Well, I don't want to speak to your continuance request. I want to go back to our previous meeting. And Kathy, you just said the purpose of this is to add the convention site, which I have absolutely no problem with. You also said it's also intended to give the city maximum flexibility in acquiring other parcels. That was my question in the first place. Back on August 9th, we -- it appeared, what I saw, that we were not just adding the footprint of the convention site, we were adding significantly more area. That has gone unaggressed until we get the staff report, which is quite bloated, but I tried to read. Now, I say I tried to read it, but the first thing I had to do was I had to get my magnifying glass to attempt to read it. This whole thing is primarily study-related and is non-responsive to what we ask. Why did we get it? Can you just specifically tell us what parcels of land are being added to the acquisition area?
The parcels that are being added to the acquisition area are the parcels immediately west of the Chesapeake Arena.
How far west?
From Robinson to Hudson. Correct. Or to Walker.
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 Oh.
I don't have --
Just a sec, Kathy, if I could. It says in just in our staff report, I drew it out, and it says apart from, to reflect the selection for acquisition of the area bounded by South Walker Avenue on the west.
Yes.
Okay, Ron Norick on the east -- I interrupted you. Norick on the east, Reno on -- West Reno on the north, and the old I-40 on the south.
Correct.
Right?
That's correct.
And so is that the area immediately south of there? I guess that's a little south and west of the existing arena.
It's --
Is that right?
South and west of the Maryards.
Southwest of the Maryards. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And that's all we want to do with this today.
Right.
Except that is not the convention site.
It is the site of the convention -- yes, it is the --
It includes the convention center site, but it --
Plus the expansion area. There is a site that was recommended for future expansion of the convention center also by the subcommittee, and that is included. That's the block from Hudson to Walker, or depending on how they lay out the convention center, you know, but basically it was seen as the block from Hudson to Walker.
Well, this is precisely why I think it should be continued, to have this discussion in some forum other than around this horseshoe when we're learning this for the very first time. And I don't see any reason why it's not continued. We have a, you know, a study session, and you come in or the consultants, whoever, some of the committee members, and we can talk about it. And I think that at that point, probably none of us would have any objection. We'd understand what's going on. But I just, I'd like to make a motion to continue it for 60 days.
I figured it out. I got it. I know now that we're talking about.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to continue item 52 for 60 days. Cast your votes, and it's continued. Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks.
Twenty, twenty. Yes, we're now going back to item 20, which is PC 10314, an application by the Latino Community Development Agency to rezone 4407 South Robinson Avenue from PUD 1123 to C3 Community Commercial in Ward 4.
Good afternoon, David Box. Microphone bro. 522 Callford Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, the Latino Community Development Agency. Also with me is Ruben Aragon with the LCDA. Our application before you is to rezone the property at 44th and Robinson from PUD 1123 to C3. A little background of this, my client, the LCDA, was given this property by a generous donor some years ago. They had an applicator -- excuse me, they had a proposal at one point to develop this lot for some low-income housing. That didn't work out, and now this property sadly has become a hotbed for prostitution. There's a tree line on the property that is littered with mattresses, and there are police that have to frequent this site weekly to clean it up. So they've had several offers for this property, but the issue that they've had is it's not zoned commercially. It's zoned for a multifamily project. Before the multifamily, PUD was in place, it was zoned commercial. So what they're wanting to do is just go back to how it was zoned, redevelop it for C3, sell it, and allow this parcel that has become a problem to be redeveloped commercially and maybe help this area. I'm here to answer any questions, and I understand that anytime you come before this commission with straight zoning, it's one that gets a lot of scrutiny, as it should. And I believe that there are not a lot of sites in the city where straight zoning is appropriate, but when you look at the pictures that are being shown on the screen and you look at the zoning map for this area, you'll see that up and down Robinson is nothing but straight I-2 zoning. So we certainly believe that this parcel, it is appropriate for a traditional C3 zoning district.
Can we quote you in the future, David, that there aren't many sites that are suitable for straight zoning?
Yes, you can certainly quote me in the future on that. But there are some that are, and I truly believe that this is one of those sites.
Okay, Commissioners' Discussion, no one has signed up.
You know, I kind of agree. You know, you've got I-2 all the way around it, or I-1 and I-2. You've got a C3. I don't see why, and this was at one time zoned C3, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
And then we rezoned it for --
We rezoned it for the PUD with the thought that they were going to put some low-income housing on it, and that idea did not pan out. They just want to go back to the commercial zoning that they previously had.
I'll make a motion to approve the application. Second.
Clerk of Discussion.
Cast your votes to approve item 20, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 21 is ABC 762, an application by Jennifer Lewis from ABC 2, overlaying C4, general community, general commercial, at 1920 Northeast 8th Street, Ward 7.
I was at previous, and I just want to ask the Commission to approve this. This is, even though it's across the street from a school, it's not a liquor store, it's not a pack-a-sack store, it's none of the above. And students, all Oklahoma City Public Schools is closed campus, so there is no children that come to the facility. And it's really a nice restaurant. I designed it myself, and I just wish that everybody would vote to approve it so that I can serve wine and beer with your meal.
No one has signed up.
How far away is it from the high school?
It's across the street.
Douglas is across the street to the east.
Are we okay as far as distance goes?
It's an ABC 2, so it doesn't have the same separation.
This is --
Are we okay?
Yes, an ABC 2 or a restaurant with alcohol, there's no separation. Your primary purpose is alcohol, then there's a separation.
Okay.
Nick, did you want to say something? Okay. Okay, a motion, second, to approve item 21. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you. I would like to y'all back.
Item 22 is SPD 679, an application by Stan Carroll to rezone 5220 East Wilshire from Double I Agricultural to SPD 679 in Ward 7.
Stan, if you could give us your name and address for the record.
Stan Carroll, 3109 Northwest 22nd Street.
And your plan is to put two structures on this site, or would it be one that would be a combination of studio and residence?
Right. The residence is a future plan, so currently it's just the art studio.
Okay.
And I did want to say that if anybody's interested in seeing the kind of work that I do, that I do have a slide show that has six or eight slides if anybody's interested, so.
I can vouch for Stan's work if that's --
We have one letter of protest that raises some issues, and I'll just ask a couple of questions. It refers to the possibility of piles of scrap iron and junk metal, blah, blah, blah. Can you tell us how you're going to do this, what you're going to do, that sort of thing?
Right. What I build is metal sculpture typically, but not necessarily metal. It can be glass or a lot of different materials. And so I do use metal as a material. You can currently see my existing studio, which is on 16th Street. The address is 1 Northwest 16th. And I currently don't have a single piece of metal outside. All my metal is in racks inside. It's valuable material to me, so putting it out back is not part of my thought process, as well as it walks away pretty quickly if you do leave anything outside, so. as well as it walks away pretty quickly if you do leave anything outside, so.
Might even rust.
And may even rust as well, depending on which one you're talking about, yep.
So nothing will be stored outside, there won't be no outside storage?
Not, don't plan to, no, sir.
Thank you.
You can make that a TE in the SPD if you want to, that there won't be any outside storage, if that's an issue. Would that be a problem for you, Stan?
If what?
If there was a TE that said no outside storage of material?
I, no, that's fine.
I think that would satisfy one protester's concern. We have someone signed up, Curtis Watson. Oh, that's, I didn't, I didn't get the... Come on. Yeah. Is there anything, give us your name and address, Mr. Watson.
I'm Tony Watson, I'm at 1607 Northwest 39. That's my brother Curtis Watson, but I'm actually the owner.
Okay.
It's just in his name, it's circumstances, it's in his name right now.
So was your concern outside storage?
Yeah, and what it is, Mr. Carroll said there wasn't nothing stored out there. Well, in the back of the property, there's old metal stacked up back there already, you know, on the property. And I'm concerned about that, and also, I feel like maybe he's wanting to build this thing, then maybe sell it real quick, because here last year, he was trying to sell the property. I guess no...
That's not our issue, that's not what's before us.
Oh, I understand that.
Whether he wants to keep it or sell it is not anything we can control.
Well, you know, I just feel like maybe he's got other land there close that he could possibly put it on, that wouldn't be really a nuisance to me or mine. I've only got one building site, I've already got a slab on there. And what he's proposing, it's only going to be like 60 feet away from my house when I do build one. It's just like I'd feel better about if he had a house out there first. I mean, who knows if he's going to build one? I don't know.
I understand. We will take care of the outside storage by a technical evaluation that prohibits it. So, when he moves to this site, he won't be allowed to put anything, he won't be allowed to store anything outside.
Are you to the east or west, sir?
West.
So this is your property right there, down there, right there on the...
And also the other owner there, the gentleman that owned the place, I bought mine, we worked a long time to get that water flowing off of my property back there. It's real low, my entrance, and if he changed the flow of that water, it's going to wash my drive out. And also, I would think he would want that in the back of the property, because that's a nice area, and a lot of nice new houses are being built. And I would like to see a nice, beautiful home right there, then he could have a shop in the back. There's a barn back there, and other places that'd be, I feel like it'd be better, and if he had a house out there, we wouldn't be here now, because he could do whatever he wanted.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner's Discussion, comments?
Chairman, I'd move to approve the application, adding a TE to prohibit outside storage.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second to approve item 22, adding a TE prohibiting outside storage. Cast your votes. It's approved, thank you.
Item 23 is SPD 681, application by Loves Travel Stops and Country Stores, to rezone 7217 South Choctaw Road from Double A Agriculture to SPD 681 in Ward 4.
Good afternoon, I'm Frank Illle, I-L-L-E, with Loves Travel Stops, I'm the manager of development. Address is 10601 North Penn in Oklahoma City. Our application today is regarding a new development. The tornado on May 10th, 2010, as many of you know, destroyed our store at I-40 in Choctaw Road on the northeast corner. And this will replace that store, this will be on the northwest corner. And this will be a bigger facility like we typically build nowadays. The purpose for the SPD is, there's no water or sewer out in that area, so we have to use the state's requiring that we use lagoons for our wastewater. And for our capacity needs, we have one lagoon on our property, and then the second lagoon will be at the adjacent property, which we have purchased. So this rezoning is just for that 4.99 acre piece of that larger parcel, just to house this second lagoon.
You own some more of that acreage, though, do you not, other than just the five acres?
Yes, sir, we own all 19 acres, I think it is.
Okay, so you had to buy the whole thing to be able to get the five acres?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we had, I had a call on that today, and they were concerned that, you know, you was going to do something else with the other acreage, and I tried to explain to them that the only thing we're concerned with is that 4 point some odd acres.
Correct, we don't have any...
Basically, all it is for is for the lagoon.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
And we do have someone signed up, Mr. Illle, Carroll and Tom Murray both. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Thomas Murray, 15208 Southeast 73rd Street, Choctaw, Oklahoma. This is my wife.
And you'd be Carroll.
Carroll Murray, same address.
Thank you. Your concerns, sir?
Ladies and gentlemen, what this gentleman just said is really a smokescreen. What he hasn't addressed is that he's increasing the volume of trucks, three times the amount of his old store was. It is parking is going to be approximately 75 trucks, whereas his old parking was approximately 20. And by the way, my expertise is in transportation.
Let me interrupt you, sir. We're not talking about whether he builds a truck stop or not.
No, I understand.
If it's zoned for that, we have no control over that.
And I totally understand that.
The only thing we can talk about is the almost five acres on the north side of his site, and whether we rezone that.
Well, the reason that I'm in opposition is, when he purchased this property, he knew what the property consisted of, because he had leased it from a Mr. White for a year after the store was taken through the tornado. But if he was able to put that lagoon on the present property, that would mean that he would have less parking, so in turn, he wouldn't be able to expand it. And in his expansion, he's doing a number of things that his old store didn't have, tire repairs, and I don't know if anybody on this council has ever been in the military, but they have what they call an impact wrench that changes tires, and if anybody ever heard a 50 caliber machine gun, that's equivalent to what the noise level that this produces. So this gentleman is expanding this, and he has every right on the present property. But because they want to expand it so big, that's why they purchased this other property to put this other lagoon. And they are not neighborhood friendly, because they've known that they were going to do this. This is affecting over 300 homes, and nobody, and we were just made note of this just last week. So, nobody in all the developments all and around here have any knowledge that this man is doing this.
Where is your residence in relation to the property?
It's way across the street. My backyard butted up to their old store, and I'll give you an example of how friendly they are. The store was taken by the tornado. And I had a 10-foot by 5-foot by 3-foot steel sign that belonged to them put in my backyard. And I requested them to have it removed after it sat there for a couple of months, and they said technically, that's not our problem, because that was taken by the storm, but we'll try to address it. Two more months later, nothing was done, so I called again, and the next time I looked back there, they had a crane crush it into my trees and left it there. And a year later, it was left up to me to remove it. The other thing that has not been addressed is the smell. In their lagoon, the winds come out of the southwest 90% of the time in Oklahoma. And that lagoon was never maintained, it spanked the high heavens, and whenever there was low, rather, high humidity, the smell was almost unbearable. Then we were never told anything about this new lagoon until just this last week. And what I would like to do, if nothing else, is have Loves meet with all the residents in the four housing additions, and explain to them what their proposals are. And another thing that hasn't been addressed, and yes, they have this right, but by increasing the size of their truck stop, they're inviting prostitution. Also, the I-40, 240 interchange there is in a perfect, perfect position for oversized loads, because the Oklahoma City has curfews for oversized loads that run from 3:30 in the afternoon till 6:00 at night, and from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning. So these trucks can either skirt the city before it gets dark and be sitting there, or else they can wait there, and when it's daylight, they can shoot to try to get ahead of this curfew. So it's a perfect breeding ground for prostitutes coming in there, because these trucks are spending all night there. And the other thing that hasn't been addressed by these people is the fact that when they had their old store, they had a hazmat spill there that killed all kinds of vegetation. And that was never brought up. And that's our concern, is by increasing the size of their truck stop to accommodate so much, many more trucks, you're going to increase the danger and the crime and prostitution. And I had people come out to my home, and I showed them in my backyard, where derelicts were taking the cardboard out of their containers and sleeping in my backyard. So, when they, they're disingenuous when they just say, well, all it is about is a lagoon. And if the lagoon is not that bad, they purchased a home on this property that's over a $250,000 home, let him move into it and see how, he likes the smell, he likes the noise.
I just, thank you, I realize why you get excited, I do understand.
The only thing I want to add to it again is asking the commission to keep them within the confines of the C-4 that was already zoned for their location. Estimates to ODOT with the design they currently have, only by allowing this lagoon to be approved, is they estimate to service 600 cars a day and 200 trucks. Where if they were held to the confines of what was C-4 that is already there, it may reduce the parking a little bit and change that. But as you know, across the interstate, the truck stop over there has already rebuilt as well, and we're receiving that traffic, and we're going to be looking at the restructure of the whole interchange. And the concern is, again, just take a look at I-40 and Morgan Road. That's not what we want on the east side. There are other areas, signs going up, trying to advertise commercial property. But again, I would like to see the commission just hold them within the confines of what is already zoned as C-4.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you both.
If I may, what is the effect of the reduction in the size of the lagoon on your operation? In other words, if you don't put the, if you don't have this lagoon, what's it, how does it change the scope of your operations, if at all?
Drastically. We would have to put that lagoon on the current property that we are leasing from Mr. White.
That's the C-4 property, the triangular piece that's below the subject site?
Yes, sir, Mr. Murray's incorrect, we haven't bought it, we're leasing it.
Okay. Is that, is the description that I have...
That would eliminate virtually all of our truck parking.
So that is, does this describe pretty adequately?
Yes, sir.
It's a fairly good representation?
Yes, sir.
So, it would eliminate the parking, but what would it, how many pumps, bays, et cetera, are you proposing in this location, for example? I know you said the scope of your similar operations, I'm...
I believe it's, I know it's seven or eight. I think I have a site plan.
Sorry.
It's eight. Eight diesel bays.
You're proposing eight diesel bays?
Yes, sir.
And then if you didn't have the lagoon, how many, would you still have eight diesel bays, they just wouldn't park?
Yeah.
Is that fair?
That's fair, but we probably wouldn't have eight diesel bays with no parking.
What are you proposing to do with the property just to the west of that smaller lagoon?
Well, it's, it's, we weren't able to put a lagoon there farther to the west, and I have my civil engineer here, but go ahead.
Part of the reason we're not able to do it to the west is because of the drop in the land. There's quite a bit of elevation drop, it's like 40 or 50 feet as you go down towards the west. And so we got, also, we have to meet regulations for ODQ for offsets from property lines for location of the lagoon. So there was a few factors that were impacting, sticking, well, I mean, preventing us from putting the lagoon to the west of this other lagoon.
Could you not put a lift station in and get to that property?
Well, it just drastically keeps falling. I mean, if you put in the size of the lagoon, and you're working the side slopes, it just, you're like lifting a mountain.
You could lift that...
It's lower, it's, it's, it's a drop in elevation, you're not lifting it, it's just that as you go west, the elevation goes down.
I probably wouldn't have...
The elevation goes down. We're up on, this, this location's up on the hill, and as you go to the west, it goes down quite a bit, about 40 to 50 feet, and you just couldn't...
It drops too fast?
Yeah, it drops too fast, and for the capacity for this site, we weren't able, we tried several different, you know, geometrics for the lagoons, and we just couldn't fit it on the west end here.
Would you have a problem with delaying this for 30 days until the next meeting, and go ahead and meet with the neighborhood in that area?
All the neighbors that we've spoken to have been calling us, asking us when this thing's going to open, because they're excited about it.
You didn't answer my question.
Just hold on, man.
There are people, yes, that like the convenience of you being there, but many have not researched and found out, again, the volume with the tripling of the size of your previous store, the impact that we are facing. Like I said, when you, when ODOT tells me, you told them up to 600 cars a day and 200 trucks at this location, that's a big impact, and most residents have not been made aware of that. And again, as near as I could count on there, it's close to 75 truck parking spaces, where your previous store had, I think, maybe 20. I mean, I understand, it's, it's the volume, the money, that's what you want, but again, I don't think they're taking into consideration the development that's already there. You know, it's just, it's big business.
If I could, just as a question, on the property that's, I guess, just south, that's barely on our map, on 74th Street there, and directly on I-40, that is C-4, what's located there?
Is that where the, let me turn it around.
Right, right down here, I can't, my map...
That's where their old location was.
This is the old location.
That's the old Loves.
And so then, across the street to the east, where it says C-4...
That's where the other truck stop is, Thunder Plaza now, it is a truck stop.
So that's a Thunder Plaza, I see I-40 and Morgan.
No, it, well, there's one thing, there's one thing that hadn't been brought out here, too, that whole intersection is getting ready to change.
Yes.
Choctaw Road is getting ready to be full lane, all the way to, I think, to 29th, 23rd Street. I think the first phase only goes to like...
59th.
Is it 50th or 29th, is it 29th?
I think the first phase will actually just go to like 59th.
Well, it'll go by 59th because of that. Well, it'll go by 59th because of that development. To the south there, or to the north of 59th Street.
Yeah.
So, you know, that, that whole intersection is going to change, and it will take into consideration that additional traffic and so on and so forth.
I mean, would it be that much to reduce it just a little to stay within the confines of the C-4?
Well, the state requires us to have 90 days' worth of storage space for the sewage. I think that's excessive, but the state needs to be conservative in their requirements. The only reason that we need this second lagoon, I, I don't think it'll ever actually get used. The only, the only reason we need it is for that 90-day.
But is that because of the size of this facility you're building?
It's because, yes, it's because of the volume that.
Let me hear it both of you. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
We're getting into the things that Mr. Allen would suggest that you talk about in a 30-day contingent.
Could I make one other statement? Wait a minute.
Let, let me finish.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I concur with Mr. Allen. It sounds to me like some discussion should be had. I'm not taking sides here. I don't know what was and wasn't done in the past, but it sounds like some discussion needs to resolve those kinds of issues so that people are comfortable with each other and that you can explain to the residents what you plan to do, and they'll under, they'll wind up understanding it. If I lived north of a lagoon and it emitted a human waste odor on a regular basis, I wouldn't be happy. So I'm going to ask you to take 30 days and meet with the neighbors and have you both come back and talk to us if you can't reach some agreement.
Okay. And I, I guess I'll submit that we are moving these lagoons a long way west of their home now. Those, those other lagoons were budding their property.
And there are people north of, of this, though.
Well, we bought the land north of us, but we'll, we'll, we'll do as you wish. It's going to delay our construction.
We would, we would appreciate that. I mean, in lots of ways, Love's is, is a good neighbor and a good corporate citizen. I want to make sure that that takes place here as well.
If you will get in touch with me, you can get in touch with me through the city, I will be at that meeting also.
Okay?
Okay.
So Jim, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve our, to delay I-23 until the next regular scheduled meeting, which is?
Well, actually, the second.
The second of October?
No, the first meeting in September would be, be fine because we're October. October, yeah. First meeting October.
Okay. And it's on the second?
It'd be on the 11th.
On the 11th of October. Chairman, I'll second that motion, but I'll also point out, and I understand the relationship between volume and the need for the lagoon, but this application is not to build a truck stop.
Right.
It's to build a lagoon.
Right. Understood.
And I think that needs to be, you know, our concern at the meeting also is the, and I understand if they don't have the lagoon, they can't build the truck stop as big.
Or at least they can't park trucks.
I'm sorry?
At least they can't practically park trucks, which would.
Uh, but we're, we're going to be concerned with the lagoon location, not the location of the truck stop. Okay?
Cast your votes, and it's continued to October 11th. Thank you.
Item 24 is S.P.U.D. 682. This is an application by Smith and Kearney Funeral Directors to resign 14624 North May Avenue from P.U.D. 604 to S.P.U.D. 682 in Ward 8.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me today is Joe Kearney and John Evans with Nasher Constructors. What we have here is an application that mirrors a currently in place P.U.D. for the funeral home. This is to add the element to allow animal cremation. So what we did when we set out to draft this PUD was we wanted to mirror what was already done on May Avenue. And if you're familiar with what they have out there on May Avenue, I think we have a picture to show. They have a beautiful facility that's currently in place. So we mirrored the PUD that was already in place. All we did was add the animal element to this back P.U.D. It's going to match architecturally and as far as materials and design. Staff did recommend approval, although staff did have a comment in there that they want to delete any freestanding signs. And I'd like to visit about that because the, the reason we want a freestanding sign is to allow the, the customers when they come on site to know that the back building is separate from the front building, and the back building is the building that'll be done with the animals. What we called for in our, our P.U.D. was a monument sign. We don't want a pole sign. It'll be an accessory sign, so we'll, we don't want any non-accessory signs. But we do feel it's important that when people are on site, that they know what the two buildings are. So the sign we want is more for identification purposes. We would ask for your approval and answer any questions you might have.
Let's go back to the sign for a minute, David.
Yes, sir.
Basically, it's a directional sign? Is that what you're telling me?
Essentially, identification, directional, just so that when people are on site, they know that since there's two buildings and they're going to look somewhat similar, they know what building is what.
And JJ, is that, were we trying to prohibit directional signs? Uh, or were we trying to prohibit a big sign out on May Avenue that says pet crematory back building?
No, the, the thought was that there's no street frontage on this lot, so having a sign back behind the other building didn't seem to seem much of a purpose. We thought maybe just a build, a sign on the building would, would be enough.
I think the, if I understood, the intent might be that there would be a sign that would direct you to drive around the front building to get to the pet crematorium, so it's a partial identification, partial wayfinding sign, would that?
No, the sign will be on this parcel, and, and the parcel doesn't have frontage, so it won't be on the parcel that, that fronts May. It will be back. And Cindy, do you have the aerial that has?
So that being the case, what, how do we even characterize a sign there? It's.
We, we wouldn't.
On the back part of the lot.
We wouldn't, but I'm not sure it helps me find the pet crematorium.
Well, our, our thought was, when people come onto the site, if they see two buildings, if they assume that the back building is where they're supposed to go, the sign will be within the confines of the white box where our zoning is. So it, it's just to help people that are on site know what that back building is. And like I said, what we call for is a monument sign with landscape bays.
And how, do you have size limitations on that? I believe you have.
Eight foot. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move approval of the application and delete TE1.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 24. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 25 is C-6372. It's the final plat of Ironstone Phase 2 in Ward 8.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Brian Coon, representing the applicant. This is the second phase of this plat. We've met all the staff requirements, so five TEs, we agree with all of them. Actually, we've already made several corrections to the plat, so request your approval and answer any questions. Jeff?
Your name is Brian Coon, right? And you agree with all the TEs?
Yes, sir, I do. All five.
A first.
Oh, come on.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the application.
Second. Motion and a second to approve item 25. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
And item 26 is C-6377. It's the final plat of Brighton Point Phase 3 in Ward 3.
Lindsay Sowell with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. This is a final plat for the next phase of Bryant Point, or Brighton, Brighton Point. We've read through the staff report, and we are in agreement with all of the TEs. On TE number three, we are requesting a variance regarding access. We are proposing a temporary emergency access and turnaround during the phase of this construction and prior to the road being looped later on.
No one has signed up. The variance was in the preliminary plat. Janice?
The staff report indicates that both an emergency access and temporary turnaround should be provided, or all homes should be sprinkled. And you've decided to provide both an emergency access and temporary turnaround?
Yes.
Okay.
Is Hunter Boulevard, is that paved?
Yes.
It is paved even where the dotted lines are?
No. Below that is future development.
So you're going to, you're going to have a gravel emergency access?
Right.
That will have to be gravelled from, well, the end of, the south end of Hunter Boulevard down to where the access comes in?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay.
So I need approval for the variance first.
I'll move approval for the variance for number three.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the variance, TE 3. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 26. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you, Lindsay.
Item 27 is C-6379. This is the final plat of Valencia Park, addition section 10 in Ward 8.
Good afternoon, Chris Anderson with SMC Engineering, representing the developer. I have read through the TEs, agree with those. We do need to talk about TE number three, requesting a variance. We have 36 lots, and as you know, there's 30 allowed on one entry. We look at the layout of the plat, what we've done is completed the loop, which made more sense than having a break in the road and having two dead ends there. So that was the reason we did that.
Again, no one signed up, commissioners?
No, variance TE 3.
We have a motion and a second to approve the variance. Cast your votes. That's approved.
And now I'll move the application.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 27. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you, Chris.
Item 28 is PV 082, an application by Gary Hockabee and Wade Hockabee, vacate a portion of common area A in the final plat of Mustang Creek 3, Ward 3.
Again, for the record, Brian Coon, representing the applicant. This common area was dedicated back when we did Phase 3, and it was actually a typo, or not a typo, but a scrivener's error on the plat. But because it became a common area, there was common areas that went through this future area, and you're going to see the final plat next. So we could either have done the scrivener's error, but because it was common area, we have to come back and get that part vacated. As you can see, north of this piece is more common area that will be dedicated. It's actually already dedicated, but as you can see, the lots, as they came along the north side of that street, it got labeled common area instead of future lots. So that, that's why we're here today with this, and then you'll see the plat, the next item. So there's two TEs, we agree with both.
No one signed up. We have a motion and a second to approve item 28. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Item 29 is C-6371, revised final plat of Mustang Creek 4.
As I just said, again, Brian Coon, Coon Engineering, representing the applicant, this is the plat for all of these lots that go along the north side of that street. We've had about three or four years' worth of flood study issues that we've had to resolve with the deal, and we've got all that resolved. One of the issues on item 5 talks about this new recreational amenity that is a new rule since Phase 1, 2, and 3 have come forward. They're asking for three-quarters of an acre of recreational, which we don't have. We are giving enough to handle for this plat, and then he's going to put in a park. There at the, at that real sharp turn, it says common area A, we're going to put in a park there, park equipment. And it's 9,600 feet, which is above what we need for this plat. It's just we can't go back in the old plats and take out houses to put park in. But there's that common area I was talking about, will still be there, but we will have recreational in this phase. That rule came after Phase 1, 2, and 3, so we're adhering to that.
How are people going to access that?
There's, there'll be two or three walkways that go through. If, if kids want to go back to the creek or whatever, there'll be a couple of walkways to get back to it. Actually, there's three of them. And then other than that, I just, oh, there's eight TEs, and I agree with all of them except for number 5, but we've, we've agreed to do the recreation thing.
That little area that's taken out just to the west of Sarah Road, about, oh, eight or 10 lots?
Yes.
Is that an existing lot?
No, no, we're holding that out. Just south of that, there's a, the square that you see no lots, there's an oil well. And there's a pipeline that goes through that lot where the mouse is moving right there on that, what you're saying, that blank area.
Oh, okay.
If and when the oil well goes away, then we'll come back with Mustang Creek Section 5 and put lots there, but there's, but there's pipeline right there. And I need to leave it out.
No one signed up. Motion to approve. Deleting TE 5 or amending it to reflect?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I didn't see it on here, so.
TE 5.
Amend it to, there'll be 9,600 foot of recreational.
I guess we're going to call it TE 1, right? We eliminate number 5.
Developer should indicate an area of 9,600 square feet.
Yes, sir.
For recreational amenities.
Yes.
That'll be the amendment.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve item 29 as amended. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
And it's approved. Thank you.
Item 30 is C-6373, a preliminary plat of the Villas at Cedar Point, Ward 7. The deal wants to address you on this one.
Good afternoon, Dr. Har, I agree with all the public works. This plat has some issues regarding floodway being platted in the lot, and I think we have an issue. And there are some other issues related to this plat, so we are requesting that this be deferred for, for the next meeting, and so we can discuss. And we've already set up a meeting.
And Brian's nodding his agreement, so I guess the applicant's agreeing.
All right.
Great. So I'll take a motion to continue item 30 to.
Two weeks is fine.
October 11th?
Two weeks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to defer this to October 11th. Cast your votes. Oh, it's not two weeks, that's a month.
It's 27th.
Two weeks is fine.
We're making tomorrow's.
Set number 27.
We're making tomorrow's.
Yeah. I just like long continuances. Okay, 27th, it's approved.
Item 31 is an application, PV 083, is an application by D.R. Horton, to vacate note number 8 on the plat of Johnson Farms, addition Phase 1.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive here on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton, Horton Homes. Also with me is Jason Lewis and Cecil Pound with the company. What our application is, is a partial vacation of this plat, and as Mr. Klaus stated, it's a vacation of note 8. Note 8 on this plat required a certain percentage of homes to have side-facing garages rather than front-facing garages. It is important to note that my client did not plat this. They bought it after it was platted. They bought the lots. And what they found is the market would rather have larger backyards than a side-facing garage. Now, my client owns over 60% of the lots, so technically, they can bring this application on their own, but knowing that it could have been an issue, what they did was they went and met with all the neighbors to ensure that this partial vacation would not affect them and that they didn't in any way buy a home out here in, you know, relying on that a certain percentage of homes would have a side-facing garage. I did visit with Terry Massey, and she did some research into how note 8 came about, and she found that this was not a, a technical evaluation when the plat was done, it was not a bargain for agreement that was required of the applicant. It was just that developer put that note on there. So with that, we, we think the deletion of this note is appropriate, and it will have no adverse effect whatsoever, and we ask your approval.
I thought we liked side-facing garages as opposed to all forward-facing garages. This, this note is a poster child for our garage front policy. Why would we agree to this?
I can only speak. I, I've never lived in a home that had anything but a front-facing garage, so I, I'm not.
I, I have a front-facing garage myself, but this, like, flight seems to fly in the face of.
Would it help us with offset?
Well, I mean, I don't see any ameliorating effects even suggested in this. Just we can put front-facing garages in. I see no, I see no, no give, no take, no compromise.
How many affected lots are we talking about? How many affected lots?
Thirty percent, isn't it?
That's what the note said, is 30%, but because of how some of the streets curve, it, it's not many. And like I said, we, we did go meet with all the neighbors, and they technically don't have to sign anything to, for the application move forward, but they.
Which nine, which nine, do you remember the lots?
I'm going to let Mr. Pound.
Um, if you, I'm sorry.
I'm Cecil Pound, with D.R. Horton, City Manager. It is any lot that, or any block that has more than 12 units on the plat would have to have the side-facing or J-swing lots on there. So really, the, the one that's in particular that we're concerned with is the one that runs up and down Johnson Farms Road, the, the main entry route. up and down Johnson Farms Road, the main entry route. The reason for that is, as you questioned earlier, those lots are, the depth is about a hundred and ten to a hundred and five foot. If you do a J-swing or have to do a side-entry garage, you have no depth. So what you end up with are houses that are straight up and down in the air. And we prefer not to build that type of home on the entryway of Johnson Farms. So that's the only struggle that we have with the note on it. We have done, in the subdivision, side-entry homes on the corner lots, and that's not a problem at all when you have the depth to be able to do that. It's just the ones on Johnson Farms Road, they're actually shorter, shallower in depth, and that's what's causing the concern for us. And again, we've met with the homeowners twice. We had a homeowners' association meeting when the homeowners took over the development. We've talked to them about it, the ones that we've sold to, and there were six homeowners before we purchased the lots. We entered a communication with them, they have no issue with it, they actually like the idea of having more flat or one-story. We're not, we do build two stories as well, but they would prefer to have one-story and two-stories, not all one-stores, which a J-swing would probably have to take into account on Johnson Farms Road.
So staggering the lots would be a problem also, or staggering the garage fronts?
Just because of the depth of the backyard. If you want to have any backyard in there, what you do, if you take it back, if you pull your J-swing up, you lose your backyard. And it's trying to give those homeowners backyard.
Further to my point, is this is the only, that's the only straight street in the subdivision.
There are three, I think, or three other blocks that actually are affected. The one that comes along on Shelton Terrace, I believe it is, and again, the one that comes along on Miller's Creek, along the backside also. We did, on Lot One there, there's a side-entry. Right where the J is of the Johnson Farms, there's a side-entry on that street. On Lot nineteen, actually, that lot is thirty-five foot wide when the developer developed it, so we're not going to be able to really put a home in there, we're probably going to end up putting a park, swing set and things for the homeowners on that lot. So we can't do anything on that lot, as far as the home.
Do you know how many homes have side-entry garages in there? I know you've built them, that's on the.
Yeah, I don't know. All, I would say we've probably put in ten of them that have it. On the blocks where we have the thirty percent requirement, we have those lots still open until we go through this process. And what's going to end up happening with those along Miller's Creek and Shelton Terrace is, again, you have shallower depths on those curves when you have that, and that's the problem, is that the homeowners are losing backyard for those types of properties.
Well, look, complete deletion, absent, as I've said, quid sum. I'm giving no benefit to this bargain. I can't, I can't, I can't get next to it. I'm sorry, I mean, you know, look, that's part of the, that was part of the, part of the reason why we did that whole garage front thing, to have some consideration. Now we're going to get long runs of continuous front garages that are all going to be lined up right next to each other down this one continuous street. I'm sorry, I mean, but you've given me no, you've given me nothing to incentivize this commission to change this note, that I can see.
One thing that we do have, it's not straight homes that we have, we do have some elevations where you'll have two to three feet drop from a garage to the, to the front door. The other thing that we did, and we spoke to the homeowners about, we're not only going to have one-story homes, so it won't look like a military, you know, just military housing, which is single-family only. You'll have some differences in the elevations, but each of our floor plans will have some setback for garage or elevation, but it won't be a four-foot or five-foot, again, because we'll lose the backyard if we do too much of that. But there will be, there won't be completely flat housing all along those roads.
So the compromise is that you'll do what you can do to keep them light?
Absolutely.
And being lined up?
Yes, sir.
Improvising it?
Well, I mean, look, it's a commission, I'm just one vote.
I don't want a problem with it, I'm going to move for approval. Second.
Motion is second to approve item thirty-one, cast your votes. Approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Item thirty-two is S.P.U.D. six-eighty, an application by S.W.A.D. Enterprises to rezine twelve-twenty-eight and twelve-thirty-two Northwest Forty-Eighth Street, from R-one Single Family to S.P.U.D. six-eighty in Ward two. Oh, sorry, sorry. Thank you. Item thirty-three, which is not continued, is P.C. one-zero-three-one-nine, application by NAFCO Realty Company to rezine six-zero-five North Tulsa Avenue, from R.M.H. two to I-two Modern Industrial in Ward three.
Blair Naifee and A.I.F.E.H. for NAFCO Realty. I have read the staff report and their recommendation of changing our application from I-two to I-one, we have no objection to that.
Well, go ahead, Nick.
And my question was, why, and that's fine, I'm not trying to talk you out of that, Mr. Naifee, but my question was, why did the staff make that request in the first place? This appeared to be I-two land. So help me here.
Mainly because of the residential that was directly abutting to the east.
To the east.
And you'll be seeing an application shortly to take those mobile homes out and replace those with site-built homes.
Very good, thank you.
No one has, no one has signed up, commissioners? We have a motion, a second to approve number thirty-three, acknowledging the TE and the change to I-one, cast your votes. And so, Mike, you want to? Okay, thank you.
Item thirty-four is CE eight-thirty, an application by F&amp;R Holdings to close platted alleyways in the block bounded by Northwest Twenty-Third, Twenty-Fourth, North Walker and Dewey Avenues in Ward two.
Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Consulting, on behalf of the applicant. We're simply asking to close this alley for the use of parking, to support the redevelopment of the building to the south, which my client owns. We've worked with staff, worked out any issues regarding the layout. I have an email from Ms. Catherine Montgomery, if anybody's interested in that, that she supports this, be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question for staff. On page two of the staff report, there are comments, and frankly, I don't understand them, and I wish someone would explain them to me. The last three paragraphs at the top of the page, first one says, "The closing of the alley may have a lasting impact on the interpretation and development of the Paseo neighborhood, including offset street alignment." And I look at these alleys, and they're in the middle of the block, and the streets are running straight, I don't understand that, I need that explained. Then the next one, "Additional information and justification for the alley closing should be provided so that the informed decision can be made." What additional information do we need? And then finally, "If the alley is closed, the future development should physically reflect and incorporate some acknowledgement and recognition of the double alley and its impact on the development of the Paseo neighborhood." What do we want there? Black? What do those three paragraphs mean?
These have actually been resolved off the discussions between Ms. Montgomery and the applicant, so.
I'm not asking where they came from, I'm asking what do they mean?
It's essentially a recognition that those alleys were part of the identity of that district when it was created, and that there should be an effort to preserve that, and that has been negotiated with the applicant, and they have agreed to that. It'll be used for parking, but the identity of the alley will still be retained.
What I said before you shows the exhibit that we, we gave to Ms. Montgomery, she wanted to see some, the sidewalk, some green scape, and the parking, and that there's still access through that alley. So we're just asking to close it so we can park on it, the easements will remain in place, all the utilities will remain in place, it's going to support the redevelopment, much-needed redevelopment of that area, that's all we're asking for. She, she, she likes it now, so.
Move approval. Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve item thirty-four, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Item thirty-five is P.U.D. fourteen-sixty-one, application by Dwight Butler, who rezoned eighty-two-twenty-five Southwest Fifteenth Street, from R-one Single Family and Scenic River Overlay to P.U.D. fourteen-sixty-one, Ward three.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Dwight Butler, with anchor engineering, representing applicant on this item. If you recall, I had this before you a month ago, and we elected to defer it so that I could meet with Commissioner Irwin, and we have done that since then. And I have read the TE's and would like to ask that we strike TE number two, that we have addressed that in the facade regulation, section nine point one, and have met with Lance, worked very closely with him on this.
Now, did you come back with building facade and?
Yes, sir, we do have, we do have facade on the south face of the buildings that are facing Fifteenth. I'll read just a little bit of nine point one. Buildings shall be oriented such that the backs of buildings will not face Fifteenth, buildings that front Fifteenth shall have brick facade on south side. And we're still going to go ahead and brick facade the entire office on the initial building.
Okay, so Buck, you're satisfied, or this, they did respond to what you asked for? Striking TE two? Okay, so we have a motion to approve item thirty-five, striking TE two, cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item thirty-six is S.P. four-forty-six, an application by M.L.K. Nineteen Forty-eight Reno LLC, and a second complimentary LLC for a special permit to operate a transportation facility surface passenger bus terminal in the C-four, C-four General Commercial District at Nineteen Forty-eight East Reno Avenue, Ward seven.
Good afternoon, my name is Roland Tagg, I represent Greyhound. John Swinford is here, he represents the owner, but since the proposed use is for Greyhound, I'm going to speak on the application, and John may have something further to say. We came before you, once or twice before, I think one time before, it's been continued several times, but we presented it one time, and the principal concerns that we heard had to do with the site plan, and how the buses would come into the site, load, back up, and pull out of the site. We've done some redesign of that, we've put signage at various locations showing buses only, and I think we've done everything possible to keep the traveling public out of the bus area with fencing signs, and this was provided to the staff, but it didn't make your packet, but this will give you some idea of the movement of the buses in and out, so. The other issue had to do with the impact of what I'm doing here, but the impact that this use would have on the traffic at that particular area. And because of your questions, we hired an engineering company that spent quite some time doing a traffic analysis of traffic at that area. Again, we provided that analysis to the staff, we provided it to the traffic department. The staff has recommended approval of this application, but to just give you a little bit further information, after looking at the amount of traffic that would be generated by this use, the engineer said that the traffic would be, the additional traffic would be less than one percent of the traffic at this intersection. So it pretty much confirms what the traffic department thought, but it was done in a very analytical manner. In this regard, let me tell you a little bit more, refresh your memory as to what I told you before on how this actual use occurs. There are eighteen buses that come in and out of this facility over a twenty-four-hour period. When the, when this traffic analysis was done, I asked the engineers to go down to the present bus terminal, the one down on Walker, and determine, and do an actual count of the number of buses, the number of cars, and so forth that came in. When they're doing a study of traffic, apparently, they concentrate on peak hours. The peak hours are from seven to nine, from eleven to one, and from four to six. The early morning hours seem to be the least used, the least amount of traffic, the midday hours are the next in terms of traffic, and the more traffic is in the evening. This is the finding that they made by doing an actual count, and that is, during the morning hours, there would be one bus that comes into the terminal, and zero buses that leave. During the afternoon hours, there are four buses that arrive and five buses that leave. And during the evening hours, there's one bus that arrives and four buses that leave. In addition, there are cars that come and go, but your concerns seem to be more about how the buses would impact the traffic. I did my own very unscientific analysis of traffic by going out there three times. I went out at noon, and there was not a problem in a bus turning in and going out. I went out in the evening yesterday and the day before, just to see what it looked like in the evening. If you, if you went to that intersection, you'd see that the traffic light that, for traffic that is eastbound on Reno, stays green for a minute and fifteen seconds, and I'm told that seventy-five seconds is kind of an industry standard. But if you sit there and you look at the traffic as it moves through during this peak hour, that, that signal light, when it's open for an hour, I mean, a minute and fifteen seconds, it clears all the traffic during this most peak hour, completely out of the, in front of that facility. So if there's a bus trying to turn in, there's ample time at various times during these peak hours, and particularly during the evening peak hour, that they can come in. The less difficult move is when they exit, they exit headfirst, as you know, and there were just all kinds of numerous times when that intersection was completely empty of traffic that was going east. The way the buses are going to arrive, they're always going to arrive from the east, make a left turn into the terminal, and exit back out the, the exit that's an east exit, and they will turn predominantly right and go back on the interstate highway. There are about two buses that come in, that will come in through Reno, and there is one bus that exits by going directly through the intersection and going out Reno. But predominantly, the buses are coming in from that, from the interstate highway system. We believe that there is, is no material impact on this intersection. You all had before you a similar application, I represented Greyhound in that application, it was for the truck stop across the street from this location. You approve that. That, that, the configuration of that particular site was different, but it was similar in that some of you had issues about the bus backing out. Well, the buses backed out of that location. I've talked to my client, they've, they've been the owner of the Greyhound franchise for five years. Down here, they haven't backed over a single person in five years. Down here, they haven't backed over a single person in the five years that they've been operating over that site. I mean, our customers are precious to us. The last thing we want to do is not get them on a bus, but get them on an ambulance. So if you have questions about that, I have the man here who is in charge of operations. He can tell you how this works. I can tell you, before we started on this, before I ever had my hands on this application, they had, they being Greyhound, had been out there with a bus. They had driven it in and driven it out. They'd looked at the parking situation. If you look at the plot plan, you're going to see that if you went out there today, the paving ends at a certain point, but the paving is going to be extended further east to give a larger area for those buses. They know it can happen. They've got architects who do drawings, and you can see on this drawing, they can show you how a bus will maneuver in that area. So any questions that you have of me or?
Commissioners, no one signed up? Can't hear you.
I don't have any problem with it. I mean, it's a motion approved.
We have a motion and second approve item thirty-six. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Thank you.
Item thirty-seven is PUD fourteen sixty-eight, an application by Grooms Irrigation to rezone fourteen hundred East Hefner Road from PUD twelve sixty-eight. PUD fourteen sixty-eight, Ward seven.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ernie Ish, representing Grooms Irrigation. This property currently is zoned as a PUD for a pet resort and dog kennel. My client bought the property and plans to move his landscaping maintenance operation here. He will have his office on the front track that fronts on Hefner, a shop on track number two for servicing his landscape maintenance vehicles and equipment, and then plant storage on track number three. And we would ask for your approval of this. We think it's a good use for the land. I'd be glad to answer your questions.
Agree with the TEs, Ernie?
Yes.
No one signed up, commissioners?
Motion to approve the application.
Second. Motion and second approve item thirty-seven. Cast your votes and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item thirty-eight is PUD fourteen seventy-one. It's an application by Richard Breeden to rezone fifty-five forty-one Southeast one hundred and forty-ninth Street from AA Agriculture to PUD fourteen seventy-one, Ward four.
Good evening now. David Box, five two two Call Core Drive here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Justin Rhodes, who will be the developer of this site, and Warren Peacock, who did the engineering work. What our application is, is a PUD to rezone seventeen acres of AA land to essentially half acre lots. The staff report indicates that this development is not in conformance with everything else in the area, and I have provided an exhibit to show you why we disagree with that and we think this application is not only appropriate, but it is in keeping with everything else in the area. If you look at the yellow highlight, that is the subject site, and like I said, it's seventeen acres. Immediately south is PUD twelve hundred. That's approximately eighty-three acres with an average density of point eight five dwelling units per acre. Now, it's significant because our site averages out to point seven five dwelling units per acre, but like I said, it's only seventeen acres. So similar density, much smaller. That's the Pepperwell addition. That is a hundred acres. Those are all half acre lots. That's what the zoning allowed. When we go south and east, that's a hundred and forty-four acres, and that density comes out to point six eight dwelling units per acre. So it actually averages out at smaller lots than what we will provide. Now, why it's all significant is the comp plan calls for this area to be rural and one acre lots. Now, when the comp plan was adopted, one big important thing wasn't out there, public water. Now that public water is out there, you have seen more developments pop up. What you're seeing on your screen, all the blue lines are where the water lines are. So as you can see, we actually already have water right there on our site, right on one hundred and forty-ninth. So in our opinion, when the public water comes out there, it changes the nature of the area. It makes half acre lots appropriate, and that is evident by what you see out here, much larger developments, a hundred acres, a hundred plus acres with half acre lots. Now, we do recognize that there's a strain on the public services like fire in this area, and my client is willing to put in place in the PUD the requirement that these homes be sprinkled. So with that, we feel that we provided a development that is appropriate for the area. It's in keeping with what else is out there, except we're smaller and we're willing to sprinkle, which to my knowledge is not done out there. So with that, we would ask for your approval and would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
David, what are the lot sizes of your smaller lots in this area? And I mean, I'm looking at it, you've got some pretty large ones there.
Yes, sir. In our actual subject site, the smallest will be a half acre, and some of them, because of how the site lays out, will be upwards of almost an acre and a half.
Okay. If I'm looking at this layout, the largest number, at least more than half, would be half acre lots, would they not, up along the east side?
Yes, along the east side would be half acre lots. And then you got, when you get to the back, you have one that's one point four three, and there's, my client has spoken to one individual that might be interested in buying two of the lots and making it one bigger lot. So like we said, when you average out the densities, it comes out to about three quarters of an acre. And when we look at the area, there's also some commercial development that's been zoned recently along Sooner Road. You have straight C three on the corner of one hundred and forty-ninth and Sooner, and then going north above the C three, you have a spud that was put in place that allows some rural type commercial uses as well.
Okay, we have a couple of people signed up, David, and I also want to hear from Sarah with staff on the density question, I guess.
I recognize that map. Hi, Sarah Welch, Planning Department. I've met with the applicant, but I wanted to let the commission know what I, what we told them as well. This is in the southeast sector plan, which upheld it as rural. Oops, sorry. The green line that you see up there is the environmental conservation district. So when we look at the surrounding lot sizes, just keep that in mind. To the south, you have at least one acre lots, and what all we're asking for is that the lot size be whatever would be allowed under RA zoning. So we feel like half acre lots are too small. To the south, so you're looking at one acre lots, the subdivision that was approved on the northeast side of the intersection is in the EC area. That really is a nonconforming subdivision in the EC area. Lot sizes should be at least five acres. The, to the southeast, those are all about five acre lot sizes, and this is a really, this particular piece, butts up to five acre tract residential. And then to the east and north is vacant, so we don't feel like it conforms with the plan or is, you know, similar to what's adjacent.
Got a couple of questions. It doesn't conform to the plan, but the plan did not indicate that there was water in that area when the plan was developed.
You'd actually have to check that because this is in the southeast sector plan, which I think was adopted in oh eight, and I have to look and see, when was that water line brought in? Do you know offhand? I'm sorry, I'd have to check. It's when the, it's, the thing with the water, and this is a great example of why, when you're extending services, how it entices development in areas where it may not be appropriate. That water line is carrying water from Lake Draper westbound to serve the rest of the city. So the water line, I'm assuming, utilities, I have to confirm this, was extended to serve that subdivision. Now there's all this development pressure up there because it has water. And when you have water, they have, they can do aerobic systems on half acre lots. That's a DEQ that kind of opens up the, when you have a public water source, it opens up the availability of smaller lot sizes. So this area is something we're going to look really closely at with our new comp plan because it's wedged between, you know, it's the city of Moore, and then it's five acre tract residential, and then you're getting into our EC area and the lake. So does it really make sense to allow urban development to cut through this, you know, rural and environmentally sensitive area?
So extrapolating from what you're saying, the water line that's there was really not done to run water to that part of the city. It was done to deliver water from Draper east, basically? I mean?
West.
West, I meant west.
But it's still, it's still.
It's still there.
It's still there, you know, and if, you know, if you're not going to get any revenue off of it, you know, what's the deal? And that's one of the reasons why we run services, is to encourage development. And, you know, we're trying to discourage that. I mean, it seems to me.
What I understood you to be saying is that's not the reason that we ran this water line, was not to encourage development. It was to deliver water.
I understand that, but still it's there, okay? And still it's usable. It's still having, it's going to be used in that subdivision. It's used in the subdivision directly across the street. It's used in the subdivision to the, to the east.
Well, I have to say, I'm sort of persuaded by the argument that you've got five acres on one side and an environmental conservation area on the other side, and I'm not sure it does make sense to stick half acre lots in between.
Well, you've got, you've got half acre, acre, half acre lots across the street to the south, and you've got half acre lots across.
Those are all one acre to the south.
The average density comes out, and what's allowed is less than an acre. But Ms. Powers, to your point, to the east of Sooner, you actually have half acre lots within the EC district.
And that was just a really bad idea. I mean, that's something that I would necessarily want to enlarge upon.
In the current plan, point eight five acres constitutes acreage zoning because they apparently consider the physical improvements like streets in the allocation of space. So that's where the point eight five came from. That's considered an acreage development. We do have a couple of people signed up, and I'd like to give them a chance to speak. Rocky Harper would be one. If you'll give us your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Rocky Harper, and I live at ninety-two oh nine Buttonfield Avenue, and we have five acres adjacent to the land that you see there. It's inside, it's five acres just to the west of the, just to the north of Southeast one forty-nine.
Okay.
So we're, my wife and I bought some land in this location about three years ago, and our intention was to build a retirement home in a rural area. And by the looks of that area being all agriculture, you know, we had no idea that that would ever be rezoned. And so, you know, our intention was to build our retirement home there and live in a rural setting. And another point is, is that I fly off that land, and I fly a powered paraglider. My takeoffs are over just to the north of our five acres, and anything that's in close proximity, I feel like now I'm put into a position where I'm going to have to disturb my neighbors or not, or just completely give up the idea of the intended use for what I, one of the reasons I bought the property in that location. It's outside the restricted fly zone for Will Rogers, and it's outside the restricted fly zone for Tinker, and it's one of the few properties. It took us years to find that spot, and now it just looks like our dream is going to get dashed because there's going to be all these backyards right up against our house. And another problem it causes, the buildings that are there will cause rotor, and I won't, that's another reason I won't be able to fly off that property if that gets developed there. And I know that there's another person that was wanting to protest, but they didn't feel that they were, they could stay long enough, so.
We didn't either, but we're still here.
Can I ask you, would it make a difference for your intended use whether the lots were half acre or acre? I mean, assuming that something's going to get built on this property that's residential in nature, is it, is it going to impact you one way or the other?
It would impact me one way or the other. I mean, if there was one house built way back or something, or two, maybe two houses, it probably wouldn't affect me, and I could avoid flying over that house. But otherwise, I, I would just have to give up that idea of flying off that property. When you look at that, that whole quarter section is completely, it's completely AA. The whole thing is agriculture. There's nothing else in there. There's no residential, and everybody has at least five acres or more. There's maybe one or two lots that are smaller. So you would just think that you would have the rural experience, and that's really the main thing. It's not, it's, flying is part of it, but I can go to fly somewhere else. I can go find a place probably somewhere within twenty or thirty miles that would allow me to fly off their land. The main thing is that we intended to live in a rural setting, and we thought that would be the ideal location. I'm not against progress. I mean, if you look just, like you said, those other subdivisions to the east and to the south, and there's also more, if you go further north, there's others up there. There's, they're all over the place, and it seems like the Pepperwell Oaks has been trying to get people to build houses in there for the last three years, and they haven't, they haven't made a whole lot of progress. There's still a lot of lots left in there. And Turtle Lake has been there for, what, ten years, and they still haven't filled up even the lots that they have. So there's still a lot of room for, for development without them spoiling the agricultural land that's, that's in that quarter section. The other point, this is not opposition points, these are more of concern, is that the builder hasn't taken to account a large gas pipeline that runs across there. If you look at his design plan, he's got lots right on top of that gas pipeline. You can't, you can't build on top of that. It has to be at least fifty feet away. And another point is, is that he has stated that he's not going to put the road where he says he's going to put it. He's going to put it, his design statement doesn't reflect the true location of where he's going to put the road at. So that's a concern of ours because, you know, if it were to be approved, the road being where it's at in the design statement isn't quite as bad as if it were reversed and put on the east side of the property, because that would put all of the neighbors' backyards immediately up against our property. So we'd have seven neighbors with their backyards right up against what we thought was going to be kind of a, you know, at least, we thought maybe we might have one neighbor to the, to the north of us, maybe one, one neighbor to the south, two neighbors to the south or to the, to the west of us.
Okay.
I think that.
That's it?
There was another point in the notes. There's some other smaller inconsistencies within the design plan that I didn't bring up, but tried to just keep to the major ones. There's one in there that talks about all easements shown outside the plat boundary are going to be made part of the plat unless included in a given separate instrument. I didn't understand that statement, what that meant, and I didn't have a chance really to go talk to anybody because we didn't get notified until the twenty-ninth of the month of last month. And so we only really, over the holidays, we really only had just a couple of days, literally, to try to throw something together.
Okay.
Those are my points.
Thank you. If you'll give me your name for the record.
Derek Whitmer. I live at fourteen eight oh one Prairie Lane, actually west.
I live at 14801 Prairie Lane, actually west of property asking to be rezoned. We're actually five acre tracts. We have 12 neighbors. There are 60 acres to the west of that. Our neighbor to the very north end of that road, just to the west of zoning change, owns 10 acres back to the east, which would be north of the, in reference to the rezoning area. I have another neighbor, just to be the fourth house, it'd be Edwards, that owns 60 acres behind his house. So actually, we would be enclosing that entire neighborhood with our land that we own now. Eight of the residents on that street own horses. We're all agricultural. We grow, you know, have gardens in the summertime. Not only that, but back to what the gentleman just said about the gas line that runs through the property, there's also an abandoned oil well on the site. I know that they've injected with saltwater frack at least one time within the last decade. I've been out there myself for 10 years. My father-in-law lives across the street from me. He's been there for 32 years. And his mother lives to the south of him, and she's been there for 35 years. At one point, Southeast 149th between Sooner and Prairie Lane was real hilly. The city had to come out and cut the road down. I think they cut it down 20 feet, which in turn, she is the first residential house east of Prairie Lane right there. She had to have 120 loads of dirt brought out to her home to fill in the creek that washed out once they cut the road out, which of course she had to pay for. Another issue we have is pretty much nine months out of the year, it's flooded, that pond right there. There is no perking in that ground. So everybody would have to have aerobic systems put in, but I would like to see them followed by the IRC 2009 codes for city street and sewer water. They'd have to be dumped into the city septic, you know, city water. Another concern is just property value in our area. I was one of the ones hit by the May 2010 tornado that came through that also hit the Love Store. So I had to rebuild my home, which was a kind of long drawn out process because I couldn't put a lagoon in, which the EPA or DEQ told me that, so I had to put an aerobic system in, which is another costly deal. But the question I have and concerns are if they're putting 34 homes out there and they're going to be putting aerobic systems in, if they do all half acre tracts, the water buildup is going to be worse than what it is now. All that falls back to the west of our property, falls towards us. And it doesn't break until you hit about Sooner. Maybe 100, 100 feet west of Sooner, that property falls back towards Sooner. But everything from that direction on falls back to the west towards Sunny Lane. And that was really the main concerns we have, other than just water runoff, property value dropping. Half acre tracts, I don't know what size homes they plan on building on half acre tracts. We haven't been told, like the last gentleman, we were kind of late in notification. I know one of our other neighbors didn't even receive anything about the planning commission change, zoning change. So, you know, I would like to see you guys deny this, if you would. I mean, I don't see it any help in our neighborhood as it is now. And that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you very much for waiting as long as you've had to. David?
Yes, sir. I can address some of those issues. On the issue of whether the road is going to be and whether or not it'll be slid to the east, I can tell you that as the drawing that you have is where it'll be, the road can't slide to the east. If it slides to the east, it makes a large portion of this undevelopable because of how the site lays out. So I can tell you that as it's shown with some of the half acre lots to the east of that road, it's on the screen, that's where that road will be. The first gentleman that spoke, his five acre tract, I know he was concerned with where the road is going to go, because if it's slid to the east, then he has more homes. But like I said, the road will be there, so there'll be three lots that border his five acres. The gas line, that will be taken care of. There's an easement in place. I have two gas lines that run through my property. You can't build on them, and there's a certain amount of feet you just have to be off of, but those will certainly be accounted for. Whoever owns that easement certainly wouldn't let us do it. So those will be accounted for. The oil well, whatever may have been on there has been cleared and will be cleared up. And we don't, there will not be an oil well on the site. It's gone and it's cleaned up. Now, we can certainly do some detention of that pond, and we'll have to when we develop these lots, so that if there is some flooding when we develop this, that should clear that up. And to the issue of the square footage, we will have a 2,200 square foot minimum on all of our homes. So like I said before, you know, we believe that when the water's out there, it makes it appropriate. And ours is a 17 acre. Oh, the other issue on the 34 lots, at most you'll have 24 lots, as I indicated. My client has been in contact with someone who indicated he might want to buy two of the lots, so then essentially the number of homes will go down by one. But at most would be 24 lots, which, as I'd already said, has the density of .75 dwelling units per acre. And when you see the other developments that are at a minimum of 83 and a maximum of 144 acres, this is perfectly in line with those, yet smaller in size, and we're willing to add the element of sprinkling in all of those homes. So with that, we would ask for your approval.
David, what kind of a street would you anticipate? And would you anticipate sidewalks?
The street's going to be curb and gutter. So it'll be a standard city street, 26 foot wide curb and gutter. And I believe it's probably going to be a requirement, since it's curb and gutter street, that we'll have to put in sidewalks. I imagine the staff's going to require that as part of the deals that are on the staff report.
Usually when you have curb and gutter streets, you're required to put in sidewalk. That's left up to the home builders as they build the homes, they put.
In the PUD, we require four foot sidewalks on the interior streets prior to any CFP issue.
Thank you. Answers my question. Any other discussion, commissioners, questions?
Just to add to what Sarah said, you know, the intent of the sector plan, the comprehensive plan in general, is to identify areas of the city for different styles of growth, development. And it was strongly emphasized during the discussions in the Southeast Sector Plan that people wanted to protect that rural value. The provision of water, we don't think is sufficient to support urban development. It's water and sewer. And just providing one service triggers all the other services. That's not taken into account when looking at this. You've heard from a couple of the protesters, they've bought into the area on the basis that, of the belief that agricultural zoning, that rural zoning was what they were buying into. So based on what the sector plan says, that's why we don't believe it's in conformance.
Any action, motion, somebody? I'm asking for a motion. We don't have one.
I don't know.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your votes. It is denied.
Item 39, AC 6380, it's a preliminary plat at Deer Valley Estates in Ward 8. Mr. Chairman, Brian Kinneth, Commendational, Representative Leventhal. This case, you heard, actually, the zoning case you heard several months ago was approved and was approved at council probably two to three weeks ago. We're now back before you with the preliminary plat. Eight TEs, TE number, number four through eight all have to do with just putting notes onto the final plat, so we're all okay with those. Items one and two are the standards. We are asking for variance on number three. When we came to you with the PUD to begin with, the zoning, we had whether we were going to be private or public streets, we didn't really know at the time. But by the time we ended up at council, we were going to be private streets. So one of the comments in the PUD and one of the requirements was to have the connection to go, you know, either one of the ways to the, to northeast, north, south, or west. So at the time we went to zoning, it was staff's recommendation to just go forward, and we would do administrative amendment to the PUD if you all allowed this variance. So today I'm here for approval on the preliminary plat, asking you to grant a variance on number three, because they will be private streets. They will be gated so that any connection would never go through in the future, whether we go north, south, or west. So with that, be glad to answer any questions, but we would request variance on number three.
Brian, I'm just looking at the layout.
Okay.
And with the pond there, what kind of shape is that pond in that's there?
It's probably empty. It maybe has some water in it.
Lake Hefner's almost empty, too.
Yes. So we're going to completely redo the pond. We want that to be an amenity, be our green belt, so we're going to redo the pond completely. Clean out the dead trees down in there, make it, and as you can see, it's a pretty large common area that we're going to have. That will be in phase two. I know that this staff, Fort Duss, said we have to have recreational amenity in phase one, and we will do that. That won't be a problem. You'll see that when we see the final plat. If the water comes through the property from the south, it's going to go through some storm sewer, and end up in our new pond, and then exit the property to the north, which is the natural low, so.
It's moved.
Yeah, it'll be moved a little bit. It's really, like I said, it's just an old farm pond. I don't even know if the dam is in very good shape at all or not, but we're going to redo it completely. Make it where it'll keep water in it.
We do have some protesters, but.
That's what I wanted to talk about. I have a protest, but if they're here.
They're here, and it was a pretty detailed protest. The SRS, take your pick. Makes no difference.
Now, this is mine.
Give us your name and address, please.
Does that work?
It works.
Well, I'm not any good at this. I'm Rosalie Usri, my husband Leroy, and we live at 7225 Northwest 150th Street. We've lived there for 17 years. We're here to object to this proposed plan to construct 58 houses on the 12 acres parcel of land that is immediately behind our home and our neighbors' homes. Now, I think that I've provided with each of you with a copy of a booklet that should look like something like this. And then in that, we've tried to identify many of the reasons that we believe that the approval to build 58 houses on this 12 acre piece of ground is not appropriate, and it should not be approved. The fact that no other development within a nine square foot area of this location has been developed with 58 houses on 12 acres, or the same is for .8 houses per acre. That would also include the developments that are still in the planning stages around us. I'd like to go back in the history of the layout of the existing development. Dr. Michael Duffy, in the late 70s, subdivided this area into five acre lots with a restriction of a minimum of five acres per home. All of the lots, sorry, all of the lots in Dr. Duffy's development were sold, and the homes have been developed, with the exception of this one piece that we're talking about today. The plans, there were plans to build a house on this property, but they were canceled due to a divorce. So the property now comes to this. Most of the homes were developed on two or more of the five acre lots. The homeowners located their homes near the back of their lots for privacy and to escape the traffic noise. And in your book, you know, you've got the maps and stuff to look at and see all the houses have kind of moved away from the street back for more privacy. The people who selected this area for their homes did so because of the privacy provided by the five acre restrictions. If the construction of 58 houses on 12 acres of land, and that's 4.83 houses per acre, if that's approved, this will destroy the reason that the people were attracted and why they built large homes in this community. Some of these large homes range in value from $400,000 and up. And that would virtually, they would virtually become worthless. There's no market for homes averaging 4,000 square feet with 1,200 to 1,400 or so square feet houses backed up to within 200 feet of their back door. Currently, the south 160 acres of this section, except for this, this piece of land, the PUD 1459, currently, this has all been fully developed on the minimum five acre lots. Now, there's an oak lawn development, which is west of this land, is being developed with houses on a minimum sized lot of one acre per house. In the falling springs planned development, the width of the lots on the south side of 150th Street are plotted to be a minimum of 65 to 70 feet across the front. The development plan for the PUD 1459 has the smallest planned lots of all of the past or the current and the planned developments in the area. And it's the one that's adjacent to the Duffy's development with its five acre minimum size. Now, there are step down rules for the sizes of lots in a development of properties offsetting other properties which have already been developed. And to follow the spirit of the step down rule, the PUD 1459 should not be allowed permits for 58 houses. One house per acre as being done in the oak lawn development would be a lot more appropriate. If more houses than one house per acre is allowed, such as 42 houses, which would equal a 3.5 houses per acre on this 12 acres, the developer should be required to construct a privacy wall as a buffer on the south and the west side of their development. And that's the only two sides that touch fully developed areas. Now, that's basically it. I can reread the last paragraph with a lot more emotion, but emotion isn't the fact. The fact is that that's what they've got. Now, when you take out the little pond area, I know they get certain points and all of that for that, but you're left with approximately 12 acres of land. And they're, they designed out 58 houses. Now, 58 houses on that piece of paper doesn't look bad at all. But when I look out my door, and I'm going to be looking at 58 rooftops, it's just overwhelming. And like I said, using the step down rule, they're the only small, small lot development that's backed up to us, where others around us are developing with nicer lots and assuming then more space for their houses. So this is, this is just beyond comprehension, how this ever got to the point where they can do these 58 houses. And I, Leroy, like I said, I knew if I got started, I didn't want to get involved, but I'm going to let Leroy talk to you just a little.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about, we bought this house 17 years ago. We looked for three years before we selected this location. The house was already built when we bought it, had been built on three of the five acre lots. We were looking for a place where we could have a home on an acreage. But my wife has very serious medical problems, has had all their life. She's supposed to have been dead 50 years ago, but the doctors keep putting her back together. together, and she's still here. But we found this acreage, and the reason we had such a hard time finding an acreage that we could get, because I would not get her very far from a hospital.
Sorry, I told him that would be hard for him to say, and it's impossible for me to talk about, so just accept it as a fact.
Can I ask you guys a couple of questions?
Yes.
I, I never knew anything about...
Go ahead, sir.
I never knew anything about development, PUDs, or anything. We bought a house here that was based on five acres.
You know, it's, if you've ever been ill or had someone that was, being ill is the easiest part of the whole deal. I lay in a bed, and they treat me like a queen. His life has been spent on the other side of that bed, so, I mean, we have to stay close to a hospital. I go in periodically, they work on me, and I come back. So, and I'm 70, I'm getting ready to be 75, and I feel pretty darn lucky, because at 24, they told me, "No way, you'll never make 30, and you'll do it in a wheelchair." So, the doctors have got it right, they fixed me, so his nerves are probably just about shot. We, I love this place. You can tell by the booklets. I love photography, I love the wild animals, and we take good care of them, we take good care of our property. We hope, I heard you ask someone that was facing being developed in a rural area, and I think we always knew that there would be development coming, and we're not opposed to development. It's the, it's the weird way this one got put together, with the tiniest lots that you can be allowed to make, and they come and bump up against 5, 10, 15, 20-acre estates. Now, there's a lot of, as you see on the maps, there's across 150th, that's been fully-developed, and is, the houses have all, they've pushed them to the back. We all have lots of trees, and so we don't see anybody to wave to, but we all feel very strongly about this whole thing. So, we've got development coming in across the street on the south side of 150th. We've talked with them, they've talked with us about the size of their lots, it's not looking too bad at all. The Oak Lawn development, I think that man may be doing that on his own, I'm not sure. He's doing it in a professional way, but he's doing one acre per house, and that's not going to be bad at all. But when I look out my door and I look at this tree line, and the tree line ends before the property does, we ran out of Christmas trees, as I told you, but I look out there and I know, you know, that they're going to be developed, it's okay, it's okay. I don't mind that. But 58 houses, and the ground space that they have to put those on is approximately 12 acres. It's just beyond my comprehension.
Well, first of all, this is probably one of the most complete protests I've seen. Very detailed, done a very good job on it. And my first question is, I was not here in attendance on the PUD for the approval, but, pardon? Where was this protest then? That would have been much more appropriate for us to be considering it then.
There's a reason.
But let me, let me finish. My concern now is that the zoning is in place, this is a plat. When I looked at the plat, I need help from staff here, I thought we had requirement contiguous lots had to be 75% of the lots they were contiguous.
Up to 7,500 square feet, which is 25% more than the R1 site. Dan will confirm that.
Okay, it's up to 7,500.
We wanted that council watered it, is exactly what happened.
So, it's only up to 7,500?
It's only up to 7,500 feet.
Well, I think what came out of council, boy, yeah, that don't look good, do I? What came out of council was that rule is when you're abetting another subdivision that's been plotted.
Right.
And that's why it didn't, that didn't fit in here, so I'm just clearing up why that was...
Well, 7,500-foot lot wouldn't help their protest position a bit, anyway. It wouldn't make any difference.
7,500 feet wouldn't, and that, I had forgotten about that deal, because this is purely out of character, that.
Right.
How Brian tricked us into rezoning this.
Well, we had no protest, for one thing, and it's within the urban growth area, for another, I mean, is our problem. Yes, sir.
Could I answer your question?
Yes, sir.
We were here when this was scheduled to be heard the first time.
That's what your letter indicates, yes, sir.
And it was continued.
Correct.
And we then totally knew at this and everything. Then it got canceled, and we assumed we would receive a notice when the next hearing was. And when we didn't hear, we called, and the day we called, they said, "Well, the hearing was the day before." So, the reason we weren't here to protest it, we had been the first time, but not, now, we were at the council's meeting, because we did get notice of that. And then we did get notice of this, so we're here. But it's just our failure to understand how this works and how it's put together, or we would have been there.
Thank you. What recourse do we have? You know, honestly, I, and I'm just speaking to myself, I couldn't support the rezoning, it's been rezoned. So, what recourse do we have now?
Well, I mean, you could always deny the plat. I don't know what basis, just look at the staff report, that would be supportable of that.
Nor do I, other than obviously, the whole thing is totally out of character. That's not necessarily a platting.
Right.
And I know it's, we continued this two or three times in PUD level. I've seen the staff report before.
It's...
Couple times.
It's only, yeah...
Really only once, because we didn't have a requirement in the second meeting in August.
Right. It was only approved by council in August.
Correct.
So, it's not, it's not like there's been some sort of a change of circumstance, which may, you know, cause additional consideration. I mean, council approved the density in the PUD on August 28th. You know, first planning commission meeting, Mr. Usri was here, and you all asked me to continue it so we could talk, and we met, but it was after planning commission happened again. We did meet. One of your previous councilmen got involved, asked me if I would meet with him, I said be glad to, and we met at my office and had a pretty good, had a good discussion. Then it came to council. You know, I'm not, I'm looking like a bad, bad guy today. My job, I don't find land, I don't build houses, I don't build property, I just, I just try to do the engineering, make sure that we adhere to all the rules that the city puts out for us. To the north of this is another piece of property that there are preliminary layouts being done as we speak. I was asked, when we were pursuing this to begin with, had an engineer that is represented, represented by some other guys in this room, that said, "Can we put our sewer through you?" City wanted to know if we'd do that, because they're going to develop something south of this. And we said, "Well, we're not that far along, we don't have easement to go to the north." But there is a layout to the north of this, getting ready to come to you pretty quickly, I think. We're not the engineers on it, but as you pan down, as you saw, there are, there's development to the north, if you go north, there's development there, getting, that's happened already, there's getting ready to be an elementary school, there's water available, there's sewer available, it's per the Oklahoma City plan to be an urban development. So, again, I'm the first one in this quarter, so I'm looking like the enemy here, I'm trying not to be the enemy, and I'm sorry for their condition, and I understand that. They bought out there thinking we're going to have a rural atmosphere for a long time, and I, and I understand that. Again, my job is just to make sure that we follow the rules, that I don't damage anybody's property with drainage, and that's why I'm here. I'm not, I have no financial interest in having lots, so you all know that. So, I'm trying to just, I mean, we'd like approval. I don't, you know, the deal with the stub street going one way or another, I know Mr. Usri doesn't want a stub street going his way, and we're not asking to do that. If we go to the north, we could, but again, the stub street would be never used, because it's private streets. We did agree at the council that we will put up wood fence, we will have a site-proof fence on our far west side, and it'll be all the way along our south side as houses are built. That street going to the west is phase two. It will never, it won't happen until the sewer goes to the north through the subdivision that you all will see soon. So, again, we've, we've met all the requirements of the city, it is, it is in conformance with Oklahoma City plan, this is an urban growth area, so I don't know what else to say, other than my client has done what he's supposed to do and gone through appropriate hearings, and like Dan said, this, this plan matches the master development plan that the council approved a couple of weeks ago, so...
May I ask a question?
You may.
Something I'm not sure about is we've been through, first through the planning commission, and then through the council, but I thought all of that was just to approve the rezoning.
That is exactly what it did.
So, they've done the rezoning, and I thought today we were here to approve or disapprove of the layout that he's, he's proposed.
And that's true, too.
That's partially true.
Well...
The rezoning, rezoned it to allow the density that they have put in here, the 58 lots.
Okay.
What we're here to do today is look at how those 58 lots are positioned, and to see if they, if they've put the street in the right place, it's sort of all of our subdivision regulations, those sort of things. But what I was discussing with the municipal counselor was the real place for your protest, and I will tell you, I would not have supported the rezoning. Had your protest been here, I suspect the rest of the commission would not have supported the rezoning. I can't say what the city council would or would not have done on the rezoning. That was up to them. But that said, today, we're here just really to look at the plat, which is kind of an afterthought. And this does not go, our plat recommendations, our findings are final, they don't go to the city. The zoning was the big thing, and it's in place, and that's what's, that's what's troublesome to me, and, you know, I don't know, I...
Well, then, if you come back to the, I understand what I read on what this, you know, what we do here, not supposed to put any, you wouldn't, wouldn't be inclined to put in anything that would knowingly devalue the adjoining property. And there's no question that it's going to change the value. Now, it may not wash them out completely, but it's have to, because it's, these are such small areas up against this.
But I am, all those use arguments apply to the zoning.
Okay.
Not the plat, see, that part's past.
I see.
And that's what I find so troublesome about this application. I've been on this commission for a long time, I've never been troubled like this before. I, I just see this as a big mistake, and yet it's there and it's there in its place.
I agree. Brian, I have a question. The way you've got this laid out, you notice that the, your, your, your street going west is on the south edge of the property. Is there a reason it can't be on the north edge of the property?
Well, I don't think the pond, the pond is...
They're moving the pond, anyway.
Yeah, the pond isn't shown correctly as it is. The pond is at the north end of the property now, and that's why we chose to leave it pretty close to where it is now.
Right. I'm just saying, is there any way to create some distance between a lot of the houses on the south edge of your property and these people that live along that edge? Because, I mean, obviously, you know, they still put their houses back off the road for a reason, and now you're coming in, and you're like putting, putting houses right up against their, you know, right up behind their houses.
I understand.
It just seems, is there a way to create some space there within what we're looking at here?
I mean, you could probably move the road a little bit north, I mean, 30 or 40 feet, but will that really accomplish anything? Because you're still going to have a wood fence, you'll have a 30 or 40-foot greenbelt, but who's going to maintain it? I mean, if it's outside of somebody's fence, I can see them not going and maintaining it any. If there's a wood fence, and I think you heard this in a similar case a little while ago, whether it's 50-foot lots or 55-foot lots, it's still going to be homes next to their acreage. So, I don't, you know, like I said, at zoning, at council, we agreed that we'll do a wood, and we're going to, I mean, everybody's going to put in a wood fence, anyway.
If we just turned you down flat today, is there a way that you could go back to the drawing board on this? I mean, if, I'm not familiar enough with this land to know its limitations and restrictions. Could you completely redesign this?
Not completely, no. I mean, I've got, I mean, there's a lot, there's parameters I've got to deal with, it's a long, thin piece of property, so I've got to come off Rockwell, so I can't change my entrance. The drains goes through where it does. I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what I will do. If, if, I will look at what I can do on the west side, okay? I don't, I can't promise what I can do on the south. I will do what I can, you know me, I've been here before, I will do what I can, but if I come up with a little bit different configuration, when I come back in two weeks to you, I wouldn't, I hope not to get continued, because it's something you haven't seen. The east side's not going to change at all. I'm saying I might, I'll try to do what I can on the west side, but again, if I, if it's a little bit different, I don't want to, I hope not to hear, I can't tell you, I don't want to hear, I hope not to hear, hey, this is brand-new, we don't want to hear it today. If I haven't increased my density, if I'm still at 58 lots, and it's 16 acres, not 12, so it's three and a half, you know, but anyway, I'll do what I can in that two-week period, and if I get something that I can send to you, I'll send it to you in email, and that way you can kind of see it first, earlier. I'll do what I can. I've tried, I've tried before, but that pond thing, the drains it goes through, I'll see what I can do. Again, like I mentioned to Mr. Usri in my office, there's four, there's pieces of four lots that front that west side, because two of them, you can see, are really wide. So, I think the density issue, whether I have smaller, bigger there, you're still going to have four or five lots there. I'll do what I can, and we'll continue it for two weeks, because I'll be back here, anyway, and we'll see what happens. If that helps, do what I can.
They didn't give us two weeks to prove about it, anyway.
Yeah. I mean, if, I'm offering...
We're basically locked into the zoning that's now in place.
Yes.
There's not a lot we can do about that.
Yes.
Mr. Coon is willing to at least attempt to see if he can make some modifications that would kind of help your situation. We can't reverse the zoning.
Right.
Without, I mean, the applicant would have to come back and say, "I want to rezone my property and increase it to AA," and he's clearly not going to do that, and we can't force that. So, we're kind of stuck with what we have. And I think, as Commissioner Gales has said, had we seen you at the time the zoning was heard and actually acted on, chances are, we would not have done this.
Let me ask one more question.
Yes.
This protest that we received, they...
Yes.
Did the council receive this?
The, the city council...
Yes.
...received one almost identical... And that's what they told me at the city council meeting. So you all are apparently very powerful here.
They shouldn't pass that hot potato.
Yes, they did.
I think you have tremendous sympathy around this horseshoe. I think we all wish there were more that we could do. I, for one, very much appreciate Mr. Coon's willingness to try to find a way to ameliorate the situation. If there are, I'm not trying to get you in too much trouble here, but if there are specific things that could make this any more palatable to you without causing a significant increase in the process of plating this property or of developing this property, I would encourage you to voice those, Mr. Coon, sooner rather than later.
All right. I'll bet they have, Janice, but repeating it won't hurt.
You know, I wish there were more we could do.
On that, no, I'd just like to comment. If the lots were bigger, there would be fewer houses, and if they would even, there's a lot of the land that isn't usable, and that's one of the reasons why the lots, I guess, are smallest they are. When you divide it up and use the unusable lots is how they qualify. But what would really help is to have larger lots, which will accommodate a larger house on it. That would...
Again, though, that is determined by the zoning.
Right.
They're permitted to have 6,000-square-foot lots, so we let that one get past us, but it's really too late for us to reflect that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue this matter for two weeks. Is that what we decided on, two weeks?
We have a motion and a second to continue. Item 39 for two weeks, cast your votes.
Item 40 is C 6374. It's a final plat of Rushbrook, section one.
Good evening. I'm Kendall Dillon with Craft and Toll. This is a final plat that is identical to approved preliminary plat. We have four standard TEs, which we're in agreement with, and also, if you'll notice, I think you've got one protest letter I have met with Mr. Bolivar, and I believe we've got him squared away, so we'd ask for your approval.
No one signed up. The motion is second to approve item 40, cast your votes. And that's approved.
And item 41, C 6381, is a final plat of Rushbrook North, section one.
Again, for the record, Kendall Dillon with Craft and Toll. Again, another section, same approved preliminary plat, matches the plat, have six TEs, and we're in agreement with those. Ask for your approval.
And we did have someone signed up, but we wore them out.
He used to be at the end sometimes.
Imagine that. Would have motion and a second to approve item 41, cast your votes. And that's approved. Thank you.
Item 42, C 6382, final plat of Bryant Place, section two, Ward four.
Lindsay Settle with Craft and Toll, representing the applicant. We've read through the staff report and are in agreement with all of the TEs.
No one has signed up.
Your second?
Okay, we have motion and a second to approve 42, cast your votes. That's approved. Item 43, C 6386, it's a final plat of Tower Plantation, phase three, Ward one.
Lindsay Settle with Craft and Toll, representing the applicant. We've read through the staff report and are in agreement with all of the TEs.
No one signed up. Motion approved. We have a motion and a second to approve item 43, cast your votes. It's approved.
Item 44, C 6387, final plat of Rose Creek, the lakes, in Ward eight.
Good evening. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, representing the applicant. This is the last piece of residential plating in the Rose Creek addition. We've gone through the staff report with the staff and agree with them. The TEs, we'd ask for your approval.
No one signed up. Motion is approved. We have a motion and a second to approve item 43, cast your votes. It's approved.
Item 44, C 6387, final plat of Rose Creek, the lakes, in Ward eight.
Good evening. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, representing the applicant. This is the last piece of residential plating in the Rose Creek addition. We've gone through the staff report with the staff and agree with them. The TEs, we'd ask for your approval.
No one signed up. Motion is second to approve item 44, cast your votes. Nick, you run a vote? There we go.
Thank you.
We're good.
45 has already been considered. 46 is C 6378, a final plat of Castlewood Trails addition, Ward one.
Good evening. Chris Anderson with SMC Engineering, representing the developer. I have read the staff report, and we do need to discuss TEs 3, 4, 6, and 7. I met with her, and we talked with Commissioner Hensley about the TE number 3. This is a requirement for a traffic study in conjunction with another project that has come before you, or at least was going to be before you today. A quick bit of history, if you read the report, you realize that this preliminary plat was approved back in 2006. The first opening, final plat was approved in 2007, and then another plat was approved in 2008, which basically cut in half the first final plat that had been approved. When the last final plat was approved in 2008, the developer, which is a different one than this applicant, started the project. The sewer and the water were constructed, and I checked the public works, and they've actually been accepted by the city at this point. The streets, the grading got under construction, and then somewhere the project went south, I don't know if the developer ran out of money or what, but the project stopped. The streets were cut in, but they were never paved. My client has since bought this project, and is, at this point, just looking to finish out this first opening. The boundary of the plats is the same as the last plat that was already approved. I see that there was a comment in the staff report that there was a traffic study in 2006, so that no improvements were required. So at this point, we're just looking at going forward with this plat that's already been approved twice, without having the TE requirement for that. TE number four has to do with the access variance that we're requesting. I did meet with the fire marshal, we all provided an emergency access off the west side of the project over to Serra Road, and providing a temporary turnaround at the end of the other dead-end street, and he's agreed with that. TE number six has to do with recreational common area. The developer provided a letter yesterday, they gave to Ms. Massey, requesting that the amenity requirement be postponed until the second phase of the development, which has been kind of a common practice. It's tough to get an amenity out there without any rooftops. Nobody uses it, and usually gets tore up, so they'd like to defer that to the second phase of the project. And TE number seven also kind of has to do with that. You really don't want to put in a sidewalk to an area that's not compatible for the recreation area. Rest of the TEs agree with.
I know Kendall's here. Were you working with Phil on the other plat? My only comment on that is that the, I know that there's a, Councilman Mars has expressed concern about the traffic in the area from continuing development up and down Serra Road, just kind of as an adjunct to that, that maybe the, neither, I don't think there's been any specific recommendations with respect to traffic improvements, either in this study in 2006, or additionally in the study in 2012 on the companion addition, or 2011. Isn't that right? I mean, the level of service, I think, on the other subdivision that was continued still remains within acceptable limits, is my understanding from your traffic study, Kendall. Is that right? No recommendations for improvement? In other words, I don't have a recommendation for improvement with either currently of these subdivisions.
We didn't spend a traffic study. On the plat, 360.
Phil did. Phil did. Yeah, Phil did, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's the one that I think Councilman Mars, I'm sorry, Kendall, I brought you into something if you weren't part of it, I apologize. But at any rate, I don't see any recommendations currently for improvements right now, so we're kind of operating...
Is it okay with you, or are you saying it's a problem?
No, it's a problem, because we don't have the ability to address the long-term effects, and I've spoken with Chris about, about this continuing development, because the last guy that comes along is going to get probably hit. But currently, we don't have any real recommendations for that, but we have a name for that, and it's, I won't say it. So, anyway, for the purposes of Chris's applications, it's past time for digression, is, I think we're fine at this particular point.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I want to hear a motion that addresses Chris's comments on all the TEs. Can you repeat any of them? I mean, other than moving the variance?
I can, I think that we could probably delete then TE 3, the requirement with respect to TE 3. One, that will move the variance. So far, I'm fine with the segregation of the amenities. We've got the letter on that, so I don't think we have any problems with that. Chris, you're fine with the rest of them, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So move the variance.
Okay, I'll move the variance, TE number four.
Four.
Move the application deleting TE 3, amending TE 6 to phase two.
Yes, sir.
And the rest are fine.
Well, TE number seven also kind of goes along with that.
Oh, yeah, excuse me. That's right. Just phase two.
Okay, well, first, we'll take a motion to the variance TE 4.
Oh, yeah.
Cast your votes. That's approved. He made a motion, and I have a second for the case as well. A motion to approve item 46's condition, cast your votes, and that is approved.
Okay, items 47 through 50 are being continued until September 27th. Items 51 and 2 have already been considered. Item 53 is introduction of the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2013 through 2017.
We have a motion and a second to introduce the CIP plan for 2013 to 2017, and we'll hear it, actually, what, on the October 11th? Or are we going to have some study sessions?
I think we have another study session. We've done half of the items so far, so we've got another one on that.
Okay, so this is, this is set for introduction, so that's what we're doing today, and we have a motion and a second, cast your votes. And that's set, or introduced, I guess. And that's it for items for individual consideration. Planning Commission committees?
It's continued.
Commission members, planning department, Russell?
Well, I, we do have a study session, I think, on the 27th. I'm not sure about that. We do, yeah. And the other thing I want to say at this point in time is, you're probably all aware that Susan Miller is taking a job in Tulsa, and that's a huge loss for me, and she was a great deputy.
Susan was originally from Tulsa, and the only job she would have ever been interested in came up, so she applied for it. It's extremely unfortunate for us, because she's, she was an excellent deputy. She was really the yin yang to me, you know? Whatever I didn't want to do, she'd love to do, so it was great. Is she working in like your position in Tulsa? No, she's working, be working for Incog, and will basically be in charge of subdivision zoning, so.
It is.
Effing from Development Services, Municipal Counselor's Office. Motion to adjourn. And we adjourn unanimously for those who are left.